Okay, good evening and welcome. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, thank you once again, and welcome to all who are joining us online this evening for another virtual session of the Boston School Committee. Since this is a virtual meeting, we'll be taking attendance under open meeting law requirements. Ms. Sullivan, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
President.
Mr. O'Neil?
Present.
Dr. Rivera?
Here.
Ms. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Tran?
Present.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Present.
Mr. LaCanto?
Present.
All members are present. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's meeting is being shared live on Zoom. It will also be rebroadcast at a later date on Boston City TV and on the city's YouTube channel. It will also be posted to the school committee's webpage. For those of you that are joining us on Zoom this evening, as well as those that might be joining us in the future, our meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage at bostonpublicschools.org/schoolcommittee under the June 24th Meeting tab. We have interpretation services available this evening in Spanish, Portuguese, and Cape Verdean Creole. Let's begin with Mr. Bernal, the Spanish interpreter. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Juan Bernal. I am the Spanish interpreter. I will provide live interpretation during the public comment portion of the meeting for those in need of interpretation. I will now proceed to make the same announcement in Spanish. Muy buenas tardes para todos. Mi nombre es Juan Bernal. Soy el intérprete para español y voy a proveer interpretación en vivo durante la porción de comentarios públicos de esta reunión para que las personas que necesiten de un intérprete. Gracias. Thank you very much. Please proceed, Mr. LaCanto.
Thank you, Juan. Next, let's have the Portuguese interpreter please introduce yourself. And please introduce yourself both in English and in Portuguese.
Hi, my name is Clauselie Maya. I'm a Portuguese interpreter. I'm being here for interpreting this meeting, and I can help you whatever you need. Yo soy, mi nombre es Clauselie Maya, y estoy aquí como intérprete de portugués para ayudar a ustedes en aquello que ustedes precisaran para interpretar esta reunión. Entonces, si usted precisa, se comunique, levante su mano, que estoy aquí.
Thank you very much. And finally, for our Cape Verdean Creole interpreter, would you please introduce yourself? Is a Cape Verdean interpreter with us?
Hello, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Jose Correa. I'm here for this section, giving a meeting for interpreter. Cape Verdean Creole, I'm more than happy to help whoever needs help this afternoon. Yo soy Jose Correa, estoy aquí para ayudarles porque el carverdianos quisiste que me enseñara cualquier interpretación en inglés, entonces estoy aquí, estamos así que feliz para ayudarles a interpretar. Go ahead.
Very good. Thank you again. And thank you once again to all of our interpreters who were able to join us this evening. For everyone who signed up for public comment, first, thank you once again for coming out and joining us tonight. We have approximately 40 members of the public signed up for public comment, and that signup period, for both periods, closed at 4:30 p.m. this afternoon. So a couple of quick notes. First of all, because we do have a high number of speakers signed up this evening, the speaking time for each speaker will be reduced to two minutes per speaker. So we would appreciate everyone's cooperation and understanding in trying to get through a large number of speakers and respecting the time that each of the people going after you, who is waiting patiently to speak after you finish your two minutes. The other note is, for everyone that has signed up for testimony this evening, can you please make sure that the name that you have signed into Zoom tonight matches the name that you used to sign up for public comment earlier this week? We want to make sure that we can move through our list as efficiently as possible and make sure that folks that are on our participant list can be moved up and given permission to speak when it's appropriate. So that'll make it very easy for us to make sure everyone gets called on, and everyone who has signed up has an opportunity to speak. So thank you for your cooperation in that. Before we go too much further, some of you that might have us on Gallery View recognize a new face with us this evening, and that's Ambassador Ray Flynn, former mayor of Boston, former ambassador to the Vatican. I want to welcome Ambassador Flynn. Just call out that we'll be returning to speak with Ambassador Flynn a little bit later this evening. And the ambassador has joined us because we're honoring him with the naming of a sensory room at the Tynan School in South Boston. And we'll hear a little bit more from the school and Principal Gant, the leader, a little bit later, who's going to walk us through the process that the school went through in bestowing this honor on Ambassador Flynn. So we're very happy to see you back with us. I see you're enjoying yourself outside, which is you're doing better than me. I think you just unmute again, Ambassador. See if I can unmute that myself. How can I see if I can figure this out?
Can you hear me now?
Here we go. Thank you.
Okay, great. I'm sorry about that.
Not at all.
It's nice to be on your program here tonight. I'm anxious to hear what people have to say. Just listening to the budget of the mayor passed pretty resoundingly, well, close, but a very spirited debate. So it's a great credit to the political process, the mayor and the city council in Boston. And you already know that the Boston School Committee, School Department budget passed as well. So that's good news.
Indeed. And thank you for delivering that news, Ambassador. We intended to send out our thanks to our colleagues on the city council for that vote earlier today. And for folks that haven't had a chance to catch up on the news, we do have a budget that has been passed, both in operating as well as a BPS budget and a capital budget for fiscal year 2021. And so we're very excited about that. That means $80 million in new funding for this school district in next year, which will really help us through the next phase of recovery in COVID.
Yeah, these are tough times. There's no doubt about it, both in Boston across the country. But I listened to the whole debate. I watched the whole debate in the city council today on the budget. And there's still that goodwill, that good feeling, even with the political differences. I think they have the children of the city foremost in their heart. And I think that's good. It's good for the future of Boston, our schools, and in the delivery of our services. So congratulations to the city council and to the mayor.
Thank you very much, Ambassador. We will return to you as soon as we conclude with our public comment, and we'll move forward with the report at that time.
Great. Thank you.
We also want to share that we plan to begin this evening with a citation of appreciation for Carolyn Kane, who is stepping down as the Chair of the Boston Special Education Parents Advisory Council after 11 years. Unfortunately, Ms. Kane was called away this evening to attend to a personal matter, and so unfortunately, she will not be able to join us. We hope to honor her at a future meeting nonetheless, for all of her many years of dedicated and extreme service on behalf of not only students with special needs across our city, but the parents and the caregivers that provide services for those students. So we'll have another opportunity to say thanks, but once more, I'll say thank you to Ms. Kane for all of her work. And we look forward to having her at a future meeting. And to Mr. O'Neil on the sign and clap, yes, I'll join you in that. So we'll begin now with the approval of the minutes from the June 10th, 2020 School Committee meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask members to unmute their microphones, and I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the June 10th meeting as presented.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. That's a second from Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Hearing none, Ms. Sullivan, would you please call the roll?
Excuse me, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Minutes are approved unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll move on now to the superintendent's report. I'll present to you our superintendent, Dr. Brennicus Celsius.
Thank you, Chair LaCanto, and thank you, members. And so good to see you, Ambassador Flynn. I look forward to honoring you in a little bit. I want to thank everybody for joining us virtually yet again. And before I begin my report, I want to thank my colleagues on the school committee for their incredibly thoughtful and powerful discussions that we had at our last meeting. It's what feels different about this current movement. It's that it's incredibly moving, these discussions that we're having and that we're participating in with our families, with our friends, our colleagues, our work colleagues, and really to focus and keep equity and anti-racist lens front and center in every conversation, every decisions. And I commit, as your superintendent, to continue to look at our policies and our practices and bring those forward with that lens. And I'm just grateful to be serving this community alongside all of you and appreciate learning from your perspectives last week as we continue to work towards our shared goal of supporting our children, our families, and our broader Boston community. In that spirit, last Friday was Juneteenth, and I want to thank our educators for their thoughtful discussions and the celebration of last Friday and Juneteenth. I also want to just personally thank Karen White from our Excellence for All program in the Office of Academics and for her developing a website of resources for our teachers and for families and our community to be able to educate one another and reflect and share stories of Juneteenth and really understand better some of our absent narratives that have been missing from some of our curriculum and some of our learning, even our own personal learning. We were able to celebrate virtually with our colleagues, and I want to thank also Dr. Branson for his sharing of the arrangement of the Black National Anthem, uplift every voice during our check-in with school leaders on Friday and our Equity Roundtable. I also mentioned in a staff memo to our staff on Friday morning that Juneteenth felt different this year, more recognized and more celebrated, especially by those who are previously unfamiliar with the holiday and its meaning and its deep importance. I continue to feel that way throughout the day and the weekend and just be very inspired. And we certainly have a long way to go, but I remain hopeful, especially with the leadership I'm seeing from our young people. As you know, Monday was the last day of school. It was a successful last day. We had principals starting to do closeout procedures this week as they get ready for summer cleaning and summer learning, and then our fall reopening, which you know is a really big challenge ahead for all of us. I wanted to give you some information recently about our title change with our high school principals. On Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, the leaders of our high schools met as a group to discuss the potential retirement of the title Headmaster, which the district has used continuously for over 350 years to refer to the leader of a school, a secondary school. After many years of discussion as a group and responding to my most recent request for renewed discussion, the former Boston Headmasters Association, representing 32 school leaders of secondary schools and BPS, met and agreed unanimously to retire the title of Headmaster effective immediately. The leaders of our high schools would now be referred to as Heads of School. The organization also has been renamed to the Boston High School Heads Association, or BHSHA. And I want to thank Karen Walker Gregory and Matt Hoser for being co-leads on that and for their continued guidance and support. And I invite them to speak just briefly during this report to the change. Do we have Matt and Karen on the line, Liz, where they can just speak briefly to it?
Yes, we do.
They are here. Welcome, Headmaster Holter, excuse me, Head of School, Walker Gregory.
I just wanted to first say it is an honor to be in the presence of our ambassador and mayor, Ray Flynn. It is an honor. I just needed to say that. I also wanted to just echo, you know, after many years, we've been talking about this for years, Matt and I, and the association members. And finally, we agreed unanimously to retire the title of Headmaster and become Head of Schools. So this new title accurately reflects the work that we do as school leaders and is free of gendered language and historical connotations. Matt, you wanted to follow that?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Walker Gregory. Briefly, as was said, we're very proud to make this change collaboratively with the Boston Public Schools. The symbolism of titles is very important, and we're proud to send a new and more inclusive message to our communities about what leadership can be. We know that there's a lot more work to do, but we believe this is one of the important places we can and should start. And as Heads of School, we will continue to provide strong leadership as individuals and as an association in service to our city and appreciate the continued support of all school leaders by the superintendent and the school committee. And we're happy to follow up with you in any way that you need. Thank you, Dr. Celsius, for a chance to speak tonight.
Thank you very much for your work on that. And any other questions for them or anything before I move on to the rest of my report? Okay. Thank you both. I just wanted to send congratulations to the committee and their incredible work along with the entire community to build, I think, a very compelling strategic plan, which then drove the direction of the mayor and his $100 million three-year investment that we spent all winter on really doing hearings and talking about our budget. And as Ambassador Flynn shared earlier, the budget did pass. So we are very thankful to the Boston City Council for passing the BPS budget with an 11-2 vote and the overall city budget with an 8-5 vote. We're fortunate that Mayor Walsh and the city of Boston have demonstrated a continued commitment to our Boston Public Schools. And this first year of a paydown on this investment is really going to help us support our children, especially now with the COVID restart this fall. As you know, while BPS is receiving almost a 7% increase in our budget, Council of Great City Schools is estimating that other large national districts may be aligned to receive up to 15% to 20% budget cuts in their operating budgets. So instead of making cuts, BPS is actually ensuring that we have highly paid staff. We're going to invest $36 million directly into students, including investments in school psychologists, family liaison, social workers, and one-time technology for our students, which we know our students need more now than ever. And I'm just really, really thankful to the mayor for his leadership and this historic investment. And the vote by the city council today is an affirmation of the many community voices that contributed to this five-year strategic plan and squarely places equity front and center for our children. And I want to thank every one of you for your supportive vote as well on the original budget and the good work that you've been doing. It's going to take all of us working together to ensure our kids get what they need so that we can implement this strategic plan fully over the next three years and deliver on our promise and really deliver on a Boston Public Schools that we can all be proud of. As for meals, this is just my ongoing meal update. We are so proud of the work that our FNS staff continues to do. And of course, they are serving all summer long. We are almost at a million meals with 980,187 meals distributed, and of that figure, close to 400,000 have been delivered to our students' homes. This has just been incredibly well thought out and well delivered. And we've been uninterrupted since we closed in March. And so it's just been an unbelievable service to our children and to our entire Boston community. We're open again from 8:30 to 11:30 every weekday. And in the next couple of weeks, we'll be opening additional BPS meal sites. So I want to make sure that people know to go to bostonpublicschools.org for free meals, /free meals. We have also been doing texts to parents regularly so that they know that those meals are available. Again, big kudos to our food nutrition staff and the many volunteers, the bus drivers and the monitors who just were so instrumental to this being pulled off. I just cannot thank them enough. And I think by week's end, we will be very close to a million meals being served. As for summer learning, we're well on our way to registering students for summer learning. We do want to continue to tell parents that they can still register into this enriching, hands-on summer programming that we are doing in partnerships with Boston After School and Beyond and our many, many partners throughout this city. It's really going to be a wonderful opportunity for children to do continuity of learning plans to make sure that they're ready for next school year. School is going to run from July 6th to August 7th. Of course, that will be all remote at this point, except for we may begin to provide some extended school year programming for students with disabilities. And we'll be doing those on a one-to-one basis with families as we continue to meet with families about what the needs are for their children. We also have a number of credit recovery courses for our high school students and middle school students, as well as some early college opportunities we're doing with some of our higher ed partners, youth job opportunities. We have our exam school initiative and for students entering grade six and eight, and a summer early focus for our youngest learners where they'll have at-home kits and be able to do some fun activities with their families and give them the boost for school. 37 schools are also offering their own school-based remote learning programs this summer, which is really exciting because that allows that continuity of learning to happen with their teachers. And so we're really excited about this innovative program to be able to have schools delivering that support directly to the students that they serve each and every day. I encourage everybody to, again, go to bostonpublicschools.org/summer to get signed up. And again, thanks to our many, many partners who are also helping with area camps, community programs, and other opportunities. And there's a great summer reading list there as well. So I hope everybody can be involved. I want to talk specifically about one of those pieces, and that's summer jobs. We're working with our facilities department and our city partners to create summer jobs for BPS students. We've created 469 summer employment opportunities for our young people. At Madison Park, we'll have youth crews working on facility projects such as painting, carpentry, and landscaping. Students will work on projects such as building planters and benches, benches, as well as radiator covers to be installed in some of our schools and lobbies this coming year. We're also looking to replicate these crews at other high schools to replace more students and employment opportunities at our schools. And we're working with BSAC in order to coordinate summer jobs, and even some of those are remote. And so very creative and innovative ways to be able to keep our kids engaged this summer. And some of our BPS students are serving as paid teaching assistants in our exam school initiative for rising sixth and eighth graders and the new social justice summer opportunity for our youth throughout from our Excellence in All team. Earlier this month, Mayor Walsh announced the expansion of the city's summer jobs program for youth and put in an additional $4.1 million in funding, which will support 8,000 youth ages 14 to 21 in obtaining summer jobs and engagement opportunities. To apply, visit boston.gov/summerjobs. They are still looking for supervisors for those summer jobs, about 124 supervisors. So I really encourage those folks who are 19 to 24 to come on and help us with supervising those jobs. Family hotline, as I've mentioned before, the district has established the BPS parent hotline at 617-635-8873 to ensure that families are regularly able to contact the district regarding their needs. This is going to still be staffed during the summer, and it's staffed in multiple languages so that we can make sure that our families have access to the information and can get the help that they need. It's staffed in the summer, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Again, that number, 617-635-8873. I'm going to give just a brief update on reopening. Soon, we'll be announcing opportunities for the BPS community to participate in our planning process for reopening of schools in the fall. We are holding virtual forums in July, and we've also held a few already in the past two weeks for members of the community to provide feedback. And we previously distributed a survey to assess family needs in April, but we are going to be providing a new one over the next week and during the summer at different points in order to gauge parents' thoughts about reopening and be able to incorporate those into our plans. We've also released teacher and student surveys, and also a new staff survey will be coming as well. We will use this feedback again, and notes will be gathered from our stakeholder engagement meetings as well as the survey to inform our reopening plans. I just wanted to give you guys a heads up around Election Day. It has come to our attention that due to the tradition of our school buildings being used as the city of Boston polling sites, we may not be able to hold classes in person on Election Day this coming November 3rd. So we'll soon determine whether that day becomes an actual remote learning day or whether we make it up in some other way. But I just wanted to give you a heads up that we will most likely not have students in school during that day. Of course, we have Ambassador Flynn with us today and the naming of the sensory room. And later this evening, we will hear from Principal Leslie Gant of the Tynan. And it's an elementary school in South Boston that serves many, many special populations. Principal Gant and her community are proposing that their new sensory room be named after Ambassador Ray Flynn, former mayor of the city of Boston. The sensory room is used as therapy for children with limited communication skills and is designed to help develop their senses. The sensory room features special lighting, a bubble machine, play tunnel, yoga space, and just so much more. This proposal was proposed to be an agenda item during our March 18th meeting before COVID-19 changed those plans. Ambassador Flynn, a Southie native and dedicated public servant for the city of Boston, has long been an advocate for BPS students across the city, particularly students with special needs. At the event in February celebrating the completion of the project, Ambassador Flynn remarked that there are other locations in the city named after him, but this one meant the most. I want to thank you, Ambassador Flynn, for joining us this evening for this proposal, which I fully support, and I can't wait to visit the sensory room myself. And with that, I've finished my comments.
Thank you very much, Superintendent. I'll open it up now to members for questions or discussion. I'll remind members, you can either get my attention with your hands in the air, wave them around, or certainly just raise your hand through the Zoom option. So it looks like I'll go first to the vice chair. She's raised her hand.
Thank you, Chair. And nice to see you, Ambassador Flynn. We are definitely honored by your presence. Thank you for all your previous and current work. I wanted to just take a moment, since it's the end of school, I just really wanted to thank the superintendent for all her work. I know it's been a trial by fire year, and I just want to thank you so much for your leadership and for all that you have done and all that you are doing. And we know we come together, you know, every two weeks, and we always have a lot of commentary. And it may not always be positive when we're at these meetings because part of our job is to make, you know, questions, question what is put before us. That is our responsibility. But I also don't want the moment to pass without saying thank you for the great work. And I look forward to working with you this upcoming year. And thank you so much for also really focusing on Juneteenth. I think that was really, really important. And I agree that it was really just so touching to see, you know, the highlights and the seriousness taken and the discussion. And I, you know, I hope that we continue in that vein. And I was really, really glad to hear about the headmaster title change. I could not agree more. It was always very rough for me personally to use that terminology, but I know that's what we had. So I appreciate the head of schools, and that is gender-free. So thank you so much for that. And the last thing I just wanted to say, as we move towards the summer, and you know, part of it is that I do run an organization that has a summer program, but I know that I don't just speak for myself on this front. I would like to figure out how with the programs that are in schools that are running, where where other out-of-school-time programs are running, it's increasingly challenging in terms of recruiting students, in terms of recruiting teachers. And so I have heard from a number out-of-school times in terms of not having full programs. And I know we have more than enough students that need that. So I'd love to just, I just want to put that before you with your leadership team to figure out how to work in those schools that have competing programs for even similar populations. We don't want this opportunity to go by for any student. So if that can be taken up on the leadership team to make sure that, you know, each head of school, each principal is working with teachers, and teachers know all the programs and are really recommending these programs, I really feel like all of our students really can use a summer program. And not all of it is summer school. There are so many amazing programs that are doing like such great innovation and stuff that's fun. So I would just hate to see our programs not be full. So I just want to say that. And thank you again for all of your work this year.
Well, thank you, Vice Chair. Very much appreciate that. And we do want to partner with our partners. I think I mentioned last week that it was just the Friday we closed, and the next day I was on the phone to Boston After School and Beyond saying we were going to have to think differently about our summer programming. And so I think that what we're battling is just pure exhaustion at this point from families, you know, and from kids and from our workforce. And so we will do everything we can to try to give as many personal touches as we possibly can to get kids involved this summer. Might just be slow on the uptake because they just need a breather for a minute and get late registrants coming, I think. So we're going to keep it open.
Yeah, and I understand. I know we just finished, so I feel, I'm sorry to be that way.
No, that's okay.
Summer is like around the corner, but I understand. So thank you. Thank you for taking that up.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and thank you, Superintendent. Other members, questions or comments? Ms. Robinson.
Again, I just want to echo Alex's comments and thanking you for all of the work that has gone on this incredible year. I just had a quick question, and I know it's not on our agenda. But do you have any update on the meeting of the work group that was going to come together to talk about school safety and the student policy?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry that I missed that in my comments. I very much appreciate you bringing that up. We've met twice. And we meet Tuesdays at 4:30. Ms. Oliver Davila is on that committee as a school committee rep or on that working group. And so we will continue to meet with the goal of having a draft policy to bring forward to the committee. Hopefully by, I think, 1st of August, I believe, we were hoping. Chair LaCanto, I think that was our date that we're really pushing for, and then hopefully have that adopted prior to school start.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you for that, Superintendent. I had that question as well, and you are correct. We are driving toward a resolution on both the student information sharing policy as well as the police access policy for this August and prior to returning to school. And I really appreciate, by the way, both how your team has tackled this head-on as well as the number of people in the community that have been really committed to this work, the Unafraid Educators and the Student Immigrant Movement in particular, in the work that they have done to bring together there. I believe it's called the Learning Without Fear Policy as a comparator with what has been drafted by the district to date. And I'll certainly note, we thank in particular the vice chair, Ms. Oliver Davila, for joining that work group as well to work through and bring us to consensus on those issues. I will note that for folks that are speaking tonight, I know we have a number of the people that are signed up for discussion and public comment a little bit later wishing to talk about police in schools. I will note that police in schools are an issue that we have the working group tasked to work on. That is something that they will tackle after we get through the initial issues that the working group was originally formed to address the issue of protecting our immigrant students in our schools. But rest assured, this is an issue that's been something that's front and center for the superintendent since the day she started with us. I think this is something she talked about, as I've mentioned before, in her interviews. And thinking about school safety and how we can do that in a way that best serves our students and best keeps our school building safe is a long-term project. It's a long-term conversation, and it requires a lot of moving parts. And so we are fully committed to continuing that conversation into the new school year.
And Mr., to that point, Eric Weston has retired after 34 years, and we will be bringing forward his commendation at our next school board or school committee meeting. And recognizing his many years of service.
Well, that's excellent, and thank you for raising that as well, Superintendent. I know there was a drive-through ceremony to honor him on his last day of work last week. And thank you, and thanks to Commissioner Gross at the Police Department for honoring School Police Chief Weston. Thank you to Mr. O'Neill as well for representing the committee and bringing a citation on the committee's behalf to that retirement ceremony. I'll note that Mr. O'Neill and Chief Weston go way back. I believe they've known each other since they were five years old, starting out at the Manning School and continuing on throughout BPS, and now their careers over the last decade plus have intertwined once again. So Chief Weston will be missed, and we appreciate his years of service to the district, and thank you for honoring him as such. I want to return to Ms. Robinson. You're the one who started this last line of questioning. Do you have any further questions? Thank you. Are there other questions or comments for the superintendent, looking around at the members? Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for recognizing the work of Chief Weston. It was nice along with the superintendent and Commissioner Gross and others to attend the brief ceremony held upon his retirement. So we thank him for his service to the district. And Ambassador Flynn, it's an honor to have you join us today. The committee operates in its current environment due quite a bit to your leadership and time as mayor, so thank you. And Superintendent, thank you for your comments as well, and congratulations on the end of a year. I know it was not like a year you planned and signed up for at the beginning. But we were delighted to have your leadership through it and look forward to that continuing for many years. A very quick question. It strikes me when you say we're about to hit 1 million meals served. And as you know, I've focused on that quite a bit, and I'm just wondering what your thinking is now through the summer and particularly as we approach the fall. We're going to have to have a different approach, obviously, not just to our classrooms in the fall, but a whole range of issues. And yet I want to make sure we don't back away from the great work we've been doing. So are we rethinking, for example, the My Way Cafes in the fall? Are we thinking about how to prepare fresh food in the schools and then distribute it to the classrooms to avoid students being in cafeterias? Am I getting too far advanced in my thinking?
No. Well, we're waiting on final guidance from the state on, you know, group size and all that we can do. But we do anticipate that we're not going to be able to serve in cafeteria and have cafeteria dining. So that will take us a step backwards. But I don't want to say that we're not looking at the quality of food. We will still continue with the My Way Cafe expansions, but they may have to go a little bit on hold. So Laura Benavides is working with our expert, Bertrand Weber, who came to begin to look at our food and nutrition services. And they have a group of about 14 large urban districts right now that are convening and looking at how do we continue to serve high-quality options for children in kind of the COVID reopening restrictions. And so the experts are looking at that now. We do not have an answer for that. But we are convening and thinking through that. I have a meeting with the Shaw Foundation, and to get their ideas coming the second week of July.
Okay, great, because I'd love to, I don't want us to back away from the tremendous change that has happened, that has actually been, as you know, noticed by a lot of other districts around the country that are interested in what we did. We have transformed food service. It's been going on for several years. It accelerated this past year as well. And we're just about the point of having My Way Cafes in every corner of the city and every one of our schools. And I can, the school leaders, the principals, and yes, the heads of schools, and congratulations on that as well. The heads of schools have continuously told me the changes that they see in their schools are for the better. And so I'm sure we've had a lot of great people working on this the past couple of years. And I'm sure if we task them with figuring out how to take the best of what we've been doing and adapt to an environment where we create schools in the buildings and deliver it to the classrooms, I'm sure we can think of an alternative to keep moving forward on this and not retreat back. This has been a strong priority of this committee over the years, of the mayor, and of the district overall, and would certainly appreciate pushing forward on this, not back. We just, let's figure out how to adjust on the fly.
Yeah, we'll do what we can. Obviously, you know, there's just a lot that has to go into the reopening with COVID. And so, of course, we have to do our bathrooms and classrooms and all the cleanliness and all the facility upgrades that we need to do with HVAC systems and water, et cetera. But we are balancing all of our reopening, and we'll use the best of science absolutely and do as much this, so it's not a retreat at all from delivering high-quality food to our children.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Any other further questions or comments from the members? Well, hearing none, I just want to take a couple moments to, once again, thank the city council for their positive vote on both the BPS budget as well as the operating budget. We're going to hear just in a few short moments when we have a comment from Councilor Asabi George, and I want to thank her in advance for her positive vote on both the, or actually on all three budgets that were up for a vote today, BPS operating and capital. I also want to take a moment to join my colleague, the vice chair, in recognizing the thoughtful work that was undertaken by the Head of School Association and the district in making an effort not only to remove the connotations of master from the name Head of School in our school district, but also doing so in a gender-neutral way. In, I call myself chairperson, not chairman. It doesn't exactly roll off the tongue, but I think it's important to make sure that we are recognizing positions that are appropriate for leadership, no matter who you are. And so I think, you know, this is a small step forward, but a significant one nonetheless. And so thank you once again to headmaster. I'm going to make that mistake a few more times, so I apologize in advance, but heads of school, Walker Gregory from the EMK Health Academy, and Mr. Holzer from Boston Green Academy for both leading the association as well as leading the charge on this effort. A couple other items, or just one other item. You probably heard a few comments from the superintendent in her report as well regarding our reopening plans. I do want to remind folks that July 22nd is our next scheduled school committee meeting, and we anticipate at that time being able to speak with, perhaps not with a final decision, but certainly with more clarity about what are either these, what's the recommended reopening plan, or what are the narrow options at that point for how we reopen. And so we'll expect at that meeting that we will have a pretty broad and comprehensive presentation from the district on what reopening will look like in a few short weeks to follow in early September. So we'll look forward to that as well. All right, if there are no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve the, excuse me, receive the superintendent's report as presented. I'll ask members to unmute and give me their motion. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second? Thank you, Vice Chair. Any discussion or objection to that motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call that role?
Dr. Coleman?
Approved.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The superintendent's report is approved unanimously.
Well, thank you again, Ms. Sullivan. We'll move on now to general public comment. So we're just, we're going to ask members of the public in just a moment to start lining up virtually to speak. And before we begin, I want to just remind folks once again that if you have signed up, please make sure that the name that you have for your Zoom account matches the name that you signed up for public comment with earlier this week. I also want to remind folks that because we have a large amount of speakers, we have 40 speakers this evening. I'd ask that everybody respect the time that everyone else is putting in for public comment tonight, and please keep your comments to two minutes as school committee rules require. And finally, I want to note, I believe we have six speakers from Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Georgetown this evening to speak about, speak in favor of the charter renewal that's going to be up for discussion during our report session later this evening. I want to thank Up Academy Boston for also observing the school committee's rules as well and consolidating their comments. We had, I think, about two dozen speakers that had originally signed up for Up Academy alone, and they have consolidated those speakers down to six representatives, one student, one parent, one teacher, a board member, and two alums. So we look forward to hearing them. Their thoughtfulness is always appreciated. And as always, for folks that weren't able to sign up or aren't going to be able to speak this evening, written testimony is always welcome, and you can share that with Ms. Sullivan, who will distribute it to the community, excuse me, to the committee. So Ms. Sullivan, I'll hand it off to you for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but maybe the subject, or, excuse me, but refer to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have 40 speakers this evening. So in accordance with school committee policy, time will be reduced to two minutes per person. And I remind you, when you have 30 seconds remaining, those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. Our first speaker this evening is Boston City Councilor Anisa Asabi George, and she'll be followed by Jessica Tang.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Superintendent Casselius, Chair Person LaCanto, members of the school committee, parents, students, teachers, educators, and advocates watching online. Hello and good evening. I'm Anisa Asabi George, Boston City Councilor at Large and the Chair of the Council's Committee on Education. I hope that all of you are well and your families are well during this time. First, I'd like to again thank Superintendent Casselius and the BPS staff who have participated in the city's council's budget hearings. I am pleased to say, as noted earlier, that we have passed the BPS budget as well as the city's operating budget and other budgets earlier today. This budget is not perfect, but it does contain investments that will increase the number of social workers, expand arts, music, science, and physical education and health education for grades K to six, expand access to menstrual products in our schools, increase the number of special education teachers, paraprofessionals, and family liaisons in our schools, as well as increase funds to support students with autism. Thank you to the Boston Public Schools and the entire BPS community who came out to our budget hearings to advocate for your schools, your students, and our families. This work is undone, and it has set a roadmap for the work that is to continue and to really kick off tomorrow. Tomorrow at 4:00 p.m., I'll be hosting a town hall with BSAC students to hear why they'd like a school committee, the school committee member, student member of the school committee, to have full voting rights. To all of the young people listening, I'd like to hear from you. To all of the young people listening, I'd like to hear from you on this topic and hope that you'll register uh to attend that town hall tomorrow.
Thirty seconds.
To the School Committee this evening, I'm asking you, as you are reviewing Up Academy's Boston's Charter renewal, I ask that you approve this Charter renewal application. I've had the great pleasure of engaging with the School Communit- Community over the few, last few years, both in person and as a guest with D A Rollins in some of their classrooms. I know that you'll be hearing from a number of Up Academy students, staff, and family members tonight. I hope that you will listen to their heartfelt testimony, renew their charter, and keep Up Academy within the Boston Public Schools community. I hope you all have a wonderful summer, um, and we will see you in the next couple of weeks at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Our next speaker is Jessica Tang, and she'll be followed by Ariana Rodriguez.
Good evening, Chair LaCanto, Superintendent Casselius, and members of the School Committee and viewers at home. Uh, my name is Jessica Tang, and I'm proud to serve as the President of the Boston Teachers Union. This evening, we're speaking on a few different issues, uh but would begin, like to begin with actually a quote from the Superintendent. In her Juneteenth check-in email, she wrote about committing to make the quote "systemic change is necessary so that we all feel loved, respected, valued, and safe," end quote. "We share this aspiration and remain committed to working with the district in the long-term struggle for racial justice in BPS." "As demands for racial justice resound throughout our city, state, and country and world, we commit to working to eliminate the systemic racism that persists in every U S school system, including here." "As we examine the role of police and policing in our communities, we also need to ensure that our priority is also helping all students feel safe, welcome, and supported in our schools, not just with academics, but physically and socially emotionally as well." "On Monday, the B T U released a report on inclusion and racial equity in our bulletin. Our report shows that students in BPS schools with higher percentage of white students have disproportionately better access to inclusion models and specifically have a higher teacher-to-student ratio. Our findings show that fifteen K to eight schools have more than the standard BPS model of one teacher, one para. Eleven of these schools have a higher proportion of white students than the district average, which is fourteen point nine percent. Schools with the one-teacher-one-para model have a mean of eleven point seven percent of white students, while schools with a better staffing model have a mean of thirty point one percent white students. We wish we could report on findings at the high school level. However, we've been told that BPS does not have comprehensive data on how inclusion in high schools staffed, and we hope that this is addressed as soon as possible. The Boston Teachers Union also calls on BPS to ensure that all students with disabilities, especially students of color, have access to the best learning conditions to grow academically and emotionally. BPS can boast of several exemplary models, and that is a blueprint for equitable programming throughout the district. We need inclusion done right for all of our students. Another error that requires transformative action to address systemic racism is the BPS curriculum. B T U educators, working with a couple of members of Central Office, have been calling for the implementation of an Ethnic Studies Now curriculum in BPS. Today, you'll hear from parents and educators about the importance of this curriculum and the work our members have been leading. Lastly, as the district continues that, I'm almost done, with uh reopening for our schools in the fall, we're looking forward to working with you to create a thoughtful and racially equitable plan for our students. We are your allies, and together we can create better plans. We've been working with students every step of the way, supporting them during the remote learning crisis. I've learned so much about what works and what needs to be improved, and we have a standing invitation for all of, for you all to work with us and hope we will be included in all aspects of this work moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tang. For our speakers, when you hear your name, if you could please virtually raise your hand on Zoom, that will help us identify you so we can unmute you for your testimony. We'll move on to Ariana Rodriguez. She'll be followed by Amory Alder and Jiralas Mercado.
Hi, my name is Ariana Rodriguez. I'm a BPS student, I'm going into twelve grade at Margarita Maris Academy, and I'm a youth community organizer, Asociada Latina. I'm here to the men for BPS to end the conflict with Boston Police Department and to fully fund our classrooms, school supports, and facilities. I am advocating for ethnic studies courses to be implemented and as standard for all public schools. Asociada Latina has been providing these resources for us through their Cancer Year Curriculum. This has been a crucial space for us to explore our ethnic and cultural identities. However, all schools should be required to provide these courses and lessons. BPS should use their funds to provide quality materials and courses for students. Schools should foster a productive learning environment instead of spending millions of dollars on policing students and making them feel safe, unsafe. It is time to make our schools a place where students are proud of their culture and heritage and are not fearful because of it. BPS should consider using the money that goes into BPD's pocket each year to fully fund our classrooms, staff, and facilities. Some public schools don't have a gymnasium or a healthy outlet for a student's breast. Fund social workers and school counselors so our students can have the proper guides and supports. With the money used to fund the BPD, we can create programs to support our undocumented students and our families facing financial hardships. School police are bravely disciplining and criminalizing students of color. Black and brown students know well that the Boston Police Department has been violently assaulting protesters. These are the same SROs being placed in our school hallway. It is BPS responsibility to show their loyalty and support for their students and staff of color by cutting your ties with the Boston Police Department. BPS should not oppose systematically racist structures and practice. Our school system should be an agent of change, not another hashtag of Black Lives Matter in the, in this bigger fight for systematic justice. We urge you, we urge you to hear our request for an identity-centered curriculum, ethnic studies courses, and hiring more diverse teachers. Above all, we need the Board to consider the power that you have at this critical point in time and the time and space which you are developing for our students. We need you to take care about, to care about the majority of BPS population and take action about removing police from spaces where black and brown youth should feel safe and be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. I don't see Ms. Alder um in our speakers list, um, so we'll come back to her later. Our next speaker is Jiralas Mercado, followed by Iris Diaz. Jiralas?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay. Um, hi, good afternoon. My name is Jiralas Mercado. I'm a parent of the OSHA Garden Pilot School. I'm testifying in behalf of Tarina Harris. Hi, my name is Tarina Harris. My daughter will be entering into the fifth grade in September at the OSHA Garden K twelve Pilot School in Roxbury. Going back to school during the COVID nineteen pandemic can be real stressful for kids. Not only is tough, but it can be stressful as well. Do you know that there are over nine hundred students that goes to the O G P S with one counselor and two student, student support staffs? Question, why I ask question, these kids are going to need more than one counselor. There are ten grades at the school and not enough support team for all of them. We don't know what are these, and we don't know what are on these kids' minds. Just talking to my daughter and nephew, they have their concern about the school, school during COVID nineteen. Question, I thought we had social distance. Question, how can we do, how can we do that if we are in school all day? Question, my nephew said, what about Reese's and Jim? Question. We have to wear, we have to wear a mask playing with our friends. Question. If we have to be six feet apart at lunch, how can we be with our friends to talk? Question. So school are supposed to reopen in September. Question, one teacher to twenty-five students and six feet distance. How? Question, is that placing our kids in danger of catching COVID? Question, can you imagine being in school for seven hours wearing a face mask? I know just by wearing these masks, it gets frustrating and hot, so I know how the childrens will feel. As pa, as a parent, I'm very concerned, not only my child, but for all the kids. We all, we are all family at the school, and we all look out for everyone. So here is my looking out for my family. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Mercado. Um, our next speaker is Iris Diaz, followed by Amanda Lara and Glenda Rodriguez. If you could all please raise your hands virtually. Welcome, Ms. Diaz.
Bienvenida, señora Diaz.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Iris Diaz.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Iris Diaz.
Gracias por la oportunidad que me dan de poder expresarme.
Thank you very much for the opportunity of allowing me to be able to express myself today.
Yo como madre de un niño de diez años que continuará en la escuela de Blaston para el próximo año.
As a mother, I am of a ten-year-old boy that will continue his studies at the Blackstone School next year.
Quiero dejarle saber mis mayores temores y preocupaciones.
I'd like to share with you my major concerns, my fears.
Mi hijo tiene condición astmática y me llena de mucho temor. ¿Cómo será el proceso que se llevará?
My son is actually asthmatic. He has asthma, and I'm very concerned about what type of process will be in place for that purpose.
Para la repertura del próximo año.
What we're thinking about reopening next year.
Aún no sé cómo será el protocolo de limpieza que el gente usara.
I still do not know what type of protocols, of cleaning protocols are to be used.
Por la condición de mi hijo, no puede estar expuesto químico fuerte. ¿Tiene alguna respuesta para esto?
Considering the condition my son has, which is asthma, he cannot be exposed to any strong chemicals. What do you have to respond for this?
Lo segundo que quiero puntualizar es que la escuela debe tener un personal adecuado para darle ayuda socioemocional a los niños.
Another point I would like to make is that the school has to be, be able to offer social, emotional support for the kids.
Para que puedan sobortar y mitigar este próximo año que se mislumbra de mucha incertidumbre.
For the purpose of being able to mitigate, to minimize risks for a year that shows to be very uncertain, the year to come.
Producto de la pandemia del COVID diecinueve, hay muchas preguntas que mi niño me hace.
As a consequence, as a product of this pandemia, the crisis of COVID nineteen, there are many questions my son asks me.
Podré tener recreo afuera, estaré distanciado de mi amigo Orlando.
Am I gonna be able to have a recess outside? Am I going to have her to keep distance from my good friend Orlando?
Tendré mascarillas todo el día aunque me dé alergia. Preguntas cómo esta me hace mi niño siempre. ¿Cuál la respuesta aún no sabemos?
Do I have to have a mask every day even though I could present an allergy? Do I have an answer to this? Do we have an answer? We still don't know.
Sugiero que den, sugiero que den talleres de capacitación especial a todo el personal de la escuela.
So my suggestion is that workshops of training should be offered to the personnel at school preparation, that is.
Maestros, monitors de almuerzo, y todo el personal que trabajará en la escuela con los niños.
Teachers, lunch monitors, and every staff that will be involved working for the kids at school.
Porque esto es nuevo para el mundo entero y se hace necesario que todos los que estarán trabajando.
This is new for everybody, for the entire world pretty much, so there will be a need for those who be working in these conditions.
Con nuestros niños tengan capacitaciones especiales.
Those who are to be working with our kids, they have to be sufficiently qualified.
Para la repertura de la escuela para el próximo año, sé que existe un equipo de planificación interno integrado por BPS.
I do, I am aware that there is an internal team that is part of the BPS for the purpose of planning for next year. I do know that.
La ofis, la oficina de salud, la oficina del alcalde, valoro eso, pero veo con tristeza que no hay padres ni organizaciones comunitarias.
The health and the mayor's office, they do put value on this, but it is my perception and my understanding that there are no organizations that the parents belong to for this purpose in the community.
Yo como madre pido que por favor nos permitan a nosotros, los padres, y a las organizaciones comunitarias poder ser parte del consejo que se está trabajando.
So I do request to be allowed to be part of the council that we are working on this. The parents and community organizations, so we can be part of this as well.
Para la repertura de este año escolar.
Considering the reopening of this coming scholarly year, school year.
En la salud y el bienestar de mi hijo, el que está en juego para el próximo año escolar.
We're talking about their health. We're talking about their well-being. Everything is at play considering the year that is to come.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Can we get her information, Liz, just to make sure that she's included in um in our communications for our stakeholder engagement?
Ellos van a tomar su información, señora Diaz, para el propósito de que se puedan comunicar en el futuro con usted.
Okay, muchas gracias.
Thank you very much for that.
Our next speaker is Amanda Lara, followed by Glenda Rodriguez and Anna Shapiro.
Amanda Lara is the next person, followed by Glenda Rodriguez. Señora Lara, ¿nos puede escuchar?
Sí, escucho. Buenas tardes, me escucha.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Si la podemos escuchar, Amanda.
Gracias por esta oportunidad. Mi nombre es Amanda Lara, y soy abuela de dos niños que estudian en la escuela Blackstone.
My name is Amanda Lara. I do thank you for the opportunity. I am the grandmother of two kids that are going to the Blackstone School.
Estoy extremadamente preocupada por esta pandemia de COVID diecinueve dada la infraestructura en la escuela Blackstone.
I'm very concerned about this crisis, this pandemia, the COVID nineteen, considering the type of structure that is in place of the Blackstone School.
Pienso que mis nietos no estarán seguros en la escuela, francamente.
My grandson will not be safe at school, I honestly say this.
Francamente, me siento asustada por la falta de puertas y paredes adecuadas en la escuela.
Frankly, honestly, I do feel very scared because of the lack of doors and walls that exist at that school.
En el último encuentro que sostuvimos con la Superintendente, una madre de la escuela Blaston habló sobre la necesidad de las puertas y paredes.
The last appointment that we had too with the Superintendent, actually, one of the mothers, where she was talking about the need of doors and walls at that particular school.
Pienso que como madre, la preocupación de ella es auténtica, y no solamente es la preocupación de ella, sino de todas las madres de las escuelas.
I do believe that she as a mother has a legitimate concern, not only her concern, but the concern and the legitimacy of every mother that has a kid at school.
Cuando pregunto en la escuela sobre esto, me contestan que todavía ellos no saben aún cuándo el distrito hará la reconstrucción.
Anytime I ask this question at school, they do not know exactly when the district will start with this reconstruction.
Les pregunto cuándo. Mi pregunta es cuándo.
So my question to you is, when is this gonna happen, this reconstruction itself?
Cuándo realizarán esto? No se me hace justo que empecemos un año escolar con esta deficiencia.
When is this gonna happen? I do not believe this is fair that a new year is about to start and many deficiencies are in place.
Ya que para la seguridad de todos los estudiantes, maestros, y todo el personal de la escuela durante esta pandemia.
Considering that the safety of everybody is at stake, the teachers, the staff, the people working there, and students.
Apelo a su, a su consideración, por favor.
Appealing, please to, for you to consider this.
Ordenen ya la reconstrucción de puertas y paredes. La escuela Blaston necesita esto urgentemente.
It is time to order the reconstruction of doors and walls. The Blackstone School needs this urgently.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lara. Our next speaker is Glenda Rodriguez.
Muchas gracias, señora Lara. Nuestra siguiente persona es Glenda Rodriguez. Señora Glenda, ¿nos escucha?
¿Me escuchan?
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
La podemos escuchar, Glenda. Bienvenida.
Hola, buenas tardes a todos.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Agradecía por la oportunidad de expresarme inquieto aquí.
I do appreciate the opportunity of expressing my concerns today.
Mi nombre es Glenda Rodriguez.
My name is Glenda Rodriguez.
Soy madre de dos niños que van a la escuela pública de Boston, específicamente a la escuela Harley.
I'm the mother of two kids that they go to Boston Public Schools, specifically the Harley School.
Esta escuela ha sido muy buena y ha contado con un buen presupuesto y un cuerpo excelente de maestros.
This school has been a pretty good school. They have a pretty good budget, and they have a body of teachers that is good as well.
Amo esta escuela. Estoy muy satisfecha con ella.
I do love this school. I'm very satisfied with this school.
Pero como muchas madres, estoy preocupada por la reapertura del próximo año escolar.
As many mothers concerned, I am very concerned about the reopening of the schools during the school year that is about to come.
Además de todas las preocupaciones generalizadas que tenemos los padres.
On top of the other generalized concerns that we usually have as parents. On top of the other generalized concerns that we usually have as parents.
Por ejemplo, salón de clases, almuerzos, recreos, entre otros.
For example, classrooms, lunch, recess time, to mention some of those.
Pero especialmente quiero llamar la atención aquí con relación a los buses escolares.
Specifically, I'd like to call your attention with regards to the transportation, the school bus.
En mi caso particular.
In my particular situation.
El año pasado a mi hija le quitaron el beneficio del bus escolar porque había pasado a sexto grado.
The benefit of that school bus was removed actually from my daughter last year because she actually passed into sixth grade.
Fue desastroso para mí. Casi pierdo mi empleo porque debía llevar a mi hija en bus público y no podía.
It was catastrophic to me, I almost lost my daughter because I had to bring her there to school and I was not able to do it at that time.
Porque soy una madre que trabaja y necesito el bus escolar para que mis hijos vayan a la escuela.
Because I am a working mother and I do need the school bus for the kids to go to school.
Les quiero pedir que por favor reconsideren esta disposición de no otorgar el beneficio del bus a los niños que pasan a sexto grado.
But what I'm doing today, I'm asking you to reconsider this option, not to remove the benefit of school bus transportation for those kids that pass into the sixth grade.
Mi niña tiene 12 años y no me siento bien, no me siento segura que vaya a la escuela en bus público.
My girl, she's only 12 years old, I do not feel safe, I do not feel comfortable with the fact that she goes to school by herself.
Y más ahora con el problema de pandemia que existe.
Moreover, with the pandemic crisis we are confronting at the moment.
Gracias por el espacio.
Thank you very much for the space provided today to me.
Thank you very much.
Muchas gracias, señora Rodriguez.
Our next speaker is Anna Shapiro, and she'll be followed by Robert Jenkins and Carol Willis Webb. If you could all please virtually raise your hands. Thank you. Ms. Shapiro?
Hi.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Anna Shapiro and I'm a science teacher at Charlestown High School. Each semester, one of my classes is designated inclusion class, where there is a larger number of students in need of special education services, as well as students with typically greater needs for special education support. Many students in my inclusion class comes from smaller substantially separate classes in middle school, often six to 10 people, to enter a 20-person ninth-grade inclusion class in high school. Including students in the least restrictive environment is important for learning and is a Charlestown value. Over the last five years, our schools reduced the number of sub-separate classes and included students in general education classes who were previously not included. Charlestown has a clear vision of what inclusion done right should look like. The vision includes two teachers, one developing content lessons, one focusing on modifying those lessons and paying specific attention to the needs of special education students in the class. Both teachers work together to teach and discuss regularly everyone's progress and intervene if students aren't making the progress they should be. This is a great structure. We have seen a lot of students be really successful with it. The two teacher model is particularly important for students as they transition from middle to high school, especially as they're changing their type of setting and class size. Unfortunately, while our school really believes in this two-teacher model, we are among many BPS schools that don't have the staffing to consistently make it happen in all-inclusion classrooms. This past semester, the students in my inclusion class did have two teachers. In class, having a second teacher allowed us to do small groups more effectively and provide necessary realizations, clarifications, and instructional supports. Outside of class, my co-teacher and I had time to meet to discuss their students' learning needs, create strategies, and ensure student success. The special education students in my classes were more successful with the two-teacher model than the one-teacher-one-parent model. And also, that's his demographics, data compared BTU research with all K-8 schools' inclusion models, showing that schools with higher percentage of white students were more likely to have better staffed inclusion models. The inequity and access to inclusion staff continues to Charlestown, which has only 4.5% white students, well below the district average, an inclusion model that is not staffed to its potential. School funding and inclusion done right are racial equity issues. We need a budget that provides equal access to high-quality inclusion instruction in every classroom in BPS. I love teaching inclusion classes. I believe including everyone helps all students learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shapiro. Our next speaker is Robert Jenkins. Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Jenkins with us? We'll move on to Carol Willis Webb. Welcome.
Welcome. Good afternoon, good evening, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the school committee on behalf of Up Academy Boston. My daughter started her first year of academy in the sixth grade. And let me just quickly give you a background. I have a 28-year-old son who started Boston Public. He ended up in Catholic. What I learned from enrolling him in schools through the years was the, not only the importance of education, but how teachers feed positively into our children, especially in the middle school years. With my daughter, I found that with Up Academy, they, they they make sure that they are positively, not only fed through education, but they, but the positive words that are spoken into them every single day. You can do this, you matter. I've had a teacher tell her, she was struggling in math, and they told my daughter, Paige, you can do this, I believe in you. And this allowed her to not only excel, but to believe in herself that she can exceed any, any challenges that she had, even during the virtual sessions. They've made sure that they've held Zoom sessions with these kids multiple times daily, and when they found that my daughter was still struggling in math, they held a, her math teacher held a separate Zoom session with her to make sure that, you know, Paige, let's get this so that you, you can understand and you'll pass. And, and I think this is important because middle school is, is a tender age for our children. That we teach them, not only that you can do things, school is important, but we speak positively into their lives. So I implore you to please renew Up Academy Charter of Schools status because they, they are a positive impact for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bilal Laffta. He'll be followed by Jerel White Gunter. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me? Could you see me as well? Great. Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. My name is Bilal Laffta. I'm a proud graduate of Up Academy Boston of 2012 and Boston Community Leadership Academy in 2016, and now I'm a senior student at Brown University in Rhode Island. Committee, thank you for all of your hard work and for giving me the time to share my Up experience. I do some, I do see some people I recognize. Hi, Mr. Michael O'Neil. We met at the BPS 2016 Valedictorian Luncheon where you, superintendent at the time, Tommy Chang, Mayor Walsh, and I shared a table together. I'm happy to be here. Due to the limited time, I will read a letter quickly, because there's a lot to say here. Dear Boston Public School Committee, I, Bilal Laffta, am a proud alumnus of Up Academy Boston 2012, the first graduating class, and Boston Public School in 2016, writing to request your vote in favor of renewing the charter agreement for Up Academy Boston. The outstanding leadership and incredible teachers at the school have shaped my academic journey, and I hope to see, to see Up Academy Boston continue positively shaping the experience of the students. We call ourselves scholars all across Boston. Being part of Up's first graduating class, I had the privilege of witnessing turnaround transition from Patrick F. Gavin Middle School to Up Academy in 2011, 2012 school year. While I was only a scholar for Up, while I was only a scholar at Up for a year, I witnessed extraordinary shift in the culture of learning. Every homeroom classroom was named after a college and every teacher worked diligently to support students in and outside the classroom. For the first time in my life, I started to read books for fun and solve math equations, and they became a more engaging puzzle to solve. As a first-generation, low-income, student of color pursuing a college degree suddenly became more possible. My eighth-grade teachers, Mr. Goldsberry, Ms. Harper, Mr. Cody, Mr. Chapman, and Ms. Walters, each contributed to shaping not only my academic journey but personal development. My counselor, Mr. Goldsberry, connected me with a lifetime mentor and helped me transfer BPS high schools when I felt like I did not fit in. Ms. Harper took a special interest in me, and I fell in love with learning math and excelling at my MCAS, later realizing I was ahead of my peers in high school. Mr. Chapman and Mr. Cody, you're just as much about my personal identity and confidence as a young man as they did in teaching me history and science. Ms. Walters came to my high school graduation and advised me about my next journey at Brown University, her alma mater. Before Up Academy, I was an ESL student who recently immigrated to the U.S. with challenges in my personal and home life. I was never characterized as an exceptional student, but I wholeheartedly believe my Up experience set the foundation for my academic pursuits. I graduated as valedictorian of my high school, BCLA, and as the speaker for the BPS luncheon in 2016. This year, I graduate from Brown as the first person in my family to graduate from college. I attribute my academic success to the extraordinary teachers at Up, who instilled in me values like enthusiasm, as you can see, for learning and perseverance when challenges arise. I would like to end by saying I'm in support of renewing the charter agreement for Up Academy Boston and ask for your vote in favor of renewing the charter. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Laffta. Our next speaker is Jerel White Gunter, and he'll be, excuse me, followed by Daphne Lopes. Is Mr. Gunter with us? Welcome. Mr. White?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening to all the Boston BPS committee and all people in their respective places. My name is Jerel White, and I am a student who graduated from Up Academy in 2017. I quickly just want to speak upon my experience at the school and also the lessons that I've learned that have been able to teach me, I mean, that have been able to bring me throughout my experience through high school and now preparing myself for college. I quickly just want to say that before I attended Up Academy, I went to a school called Pope John Paul II, which was a Catholic school. And the difference between the learning from Pope John Paul and Up Academy Boston was that I didn't really get to have lessons that I can take home and explain to my mother. Going to UAB really taught me a lot of life lessons, you know, the aspire rules such as achievement, scholarship, perseverance, integrity, respect, and enthusiasm. Those words, those values have held me and have led me to being a leader in my school now that I attend, which is Boston Arts Academy. I just want to quickly say that if it weren't for Up Academy, I wouldn't be able to have such insight on my look for, my search for college. I just want to say that I really do appreciate them, especially like for inference, when I was in seventh, I mean, sixth grade, I was able to be taken to Harvard University by one of the teachers. I just want to, you know, keep on pushing up, pushing up what a lot of people are saying, which is, please renew the charter for this school. This is not a normal school. This is, this is one in a bunch that really have encouraged people, encouraged students, and encouraged people who are now becoming adults to really become leaders and really become people of the community. I just want to continue to say, please renew the charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White. Next we'll hear from Daphne Lopes, followed by Emma Fialca Feldman. Ms. Lopes with us? Daphne Lopes, welcome. Ms. Lopes?
I'm sorry, I'm here. I'm sorry, I just got out of the hospital and I was taking some medication. I'm in a lot of pain, so I apologize ahead of time. Good evening, school committee members, Councilwoman Asabi George, Ambassador Flynn, all virtual viewers and families. My name is Daphne Lopes and I'm a proud alumni of Up Academy Boston. This is the third time that I've been before the school committee to testify on Up's behalf. I came before you when John P. Holland transitioned from the Holland to Up Academy Holland, and I testified about how great and outstanding the education was there, and my son actually came dressed up just like the people that he saw there as an inspiration. When you all were thinking about closing down our sister school, UAD, I came right back before this committee to tell you that that school is a vital part of our community and we need it, and it is vital for us. And again, I'm back here before you tonight to talk to you about UAB. This school has made an impact on my son, on my community, on my family, and just so that you know, when I say my, every child born is my child just by another mother. I kind of wanted to sum up what I had to say, so I wrote it in a poem. From Charlestown High School to UAB, Up Education Network has been there for me. From UAH to UAD, all the way up to UAB, they do their best, excuse me, they push the scholars to do their best. They prepare the scholars to pass their test. They get the chance to use their voice with an advisor for high school choice. Opportunities for fun they do not lack with soccer, football, basketball, and track. And that's not it, there's more still. Parents have a voice on the school council. Parents and staff work together as a team, so parent initiatives work like a dream. Like MCAS breakfast and teacher appreciation, Black History Month, and eighth-grade graduation. So UAB should always be there to continue to provide this wraparound care. So I'm asking this from all of you all, please renew UAB renewal. Thank you, and I yield the floor.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Emma Fialca Feldman, and she'll be followed by Chrison Hill.
Good evening. That's a tough act to follow, but I'll try. Good evening. My name is Emma Fialca Feldman. I've been a BPS triple-certified elementary teacher for over seven years and recently had to say goodbye to my brilliant and joyful second graders as I leave the classroom to learn about school leadership in BPS through the Lynch Leadership Aspiring Principal Program. Now more than ever, I'm committed to the powerful potential work of public schools in Boston. I say potential because we are at an incredible crossroads in the future of our schools. Since I have been in BPS, the language of inclusive schools has been dominant. But language without the right vision, leadership, or adult support does little to actualize the potential powerful work of inclusive schools. I have seen inclusion work for students with and without disabilities. In these classrooms, all students achieve at high levels, families receive supports to be the best advocates for their children, and educators receive dedicated supports to actualize the visions we have for inclusive schools. I have seen inclusion done poorly, and reality, this is not inclusion. In these models, students are deemed not yet ready for inclusion. Families have to hire advocates to demand adequate services, and educators burn out and feel like failures unable to meet the needs of their students. The BTU's Racial Equity Report highlights that the best inclusive opportunities are disproportionately available to white students. Students of color, who have historically been failed by our education system, continue to be denied the opportunities that strong, adult-lotted inclusive classrooms provide. Black and brown students are placed in our sub-separate programs. The national research is clear. Students in inclusive classrooms perform at higher levels. If Black Lives Matter, as our district has stated, then we must do inclusion right. I stay committed to the Boston Public Schools, but I hope to be part of a district that matches the words with the funding, vision, and practices of inclusion done right. This means more adults in inclusion classrooms. I hope BPS will demonstrate that inclusion isn't just for some kids, white kids in certain schools. It's the expectation for all kids, especially black and brown students all across the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Chrison Hill, followed by Amar Kumar and Denise Lopez. If you could please all raise your hand virtually. Is Chrison Hill with us? Amar Kumar? Welcome.
Yes, I'm here. Good evening. Thank you very much, and thank you to the school committee for inviting public comment. My name is Amar Kumar and I'm the chair of the Up Boston School Committee. I would like to say a few words in support about Boston's charter renewal. I firmly believe that this school is doing heroic work for the students of South Boston in one of the most challenging educational environments our school systems have ever seen. Even before COVID-19, this school was laser-focused on developing a rigorous academic environment for students from all backgrounds. We know we are on a path to improvement, and we were really disappointed to not be able to see the results in the MCAS this year. Regardless, this school's leadership has done the hard work to reduce exclusions, support families, and build a warm and nurturing environment for children. When COVID-19 hit, like all of you, I was worried about the impact on student engagement and learning loss. I am so proud to say that our board has been blown away by the tremendous creativity and dedication the Up Boston team has shown in service of its students. Outside of my board responsibilities, I work with school districts across the United States, and I have had the privilege to speak to dozens of them in the past three months. Up Boston has truly been a shining example that I have used with other districts around the country. Not only did they pivot to a remote learning plan quickly when the shutdown started, but they ensured that everyone who needed a laptop or device access had one. Since then, their student communication rates have consistently been north of 90%, a record among all of the schools and districts I have spoken to across the country. As a result of this, the students at the school are cultivating their sharp minds and sharing their kind hearts. I wholeheartedly endorse the renewal of this school's charter so they can continue to serve the community and help their kids explore their full potential. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kumar. Our next speaker is Denisa Lopez. Welcome.
Welcome, everyone. Good evening, everybody. My name is Denisa Lopez, and I am from the Umana Academy in East Boston. I am here representing myself, Educators for Excellence, and the Demilitarized BPS Campaign. I'm here to discuss the BPS budget. As a first grade teacher, I would like to see the funds being spent differently, especially reflecting on the events that have resulted from COVID-19 and the Black Lives Movement. I believe that resources could and should be spent proactively. I appreciate all of the police officers who work so hard to keep us safe and risk their lives to protect the citizens of this community. As a woman with two young children, I rest at peace knowing that I can reach out to the police if I feel my life is in danger. Potential harm could be everywhere. However, schools are a place of learning. We work with children and teenagers. There are other ways to make schools safer for everyone, especially young adults. We will need to use our money in more creative ways to make sure that students have opportunities to catch up. Children come to school with so much energy, love, and passion for learning, but circumstances out of their control prevents them from reaching their potential. If we can assure that students are able to gain access to society via education, we will reduce the school-to-prison pipeline. We know that prisons are businesses, and that many inmates are people of color. Many of these people have low reading abilities and history of school failure. We do not need to perpetuate these data. We can create change. We can use these funds to help support all learners so they can become productive members of society. It's time that we stop fighting with each other, black versus white, rich versus poor. It's time that we think of ourselves as one human race. While we are battling over who's right or wrong, our planet continues to suffer. Diversity is the key to our survival, and we must work together and love ourselves and each other to find ways to protect our home. Going forward, we must deeply consider our budgets and make adjustments so that funds are allocated in ways that support learning, both academically and emotionally. Let's read the numbers of police officers and give our schools more hope. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Our next speakers are Monica Johnson, Mike Heishman, and Roseanne Lobato. If you could all please raise your hands virtually. Ms. Johnson? Welcome. Welcome. I see she's here.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, school board committee. My name is Monica Johnson, and I'm from the Curly K-8 school located in Jamaica Plain. I'm here as part of the Demilitarized BPS, a campaign led by a group of BPS educators that simply want to know why there's still a school-to-prison pipeline in a majority of our schools. I want to discuss the demilitarization of our public schools and recommend the following four demands in the best interest of our students, BPS families, and our outside communities. This committee must remove metal detectors in all BPS schools, remove school resource officers, and use the funding to hire mental health staff, implement anti-racist training for all BPS staff with an emphasis on restorative practices, and educating black and brown students, including undocumented students, with great belief in their potential and their cultural and artistic assets, and create a formal pipeline for BPS graduates to become family liaisons and mental health professionals so that they reflect the communities they serve. I have two questions for each of you to think about. First, did you attend any schools that had metal detectors and police officers? Second, do your children or friends' children go to schools that have metal detectors or police officers in them? If not, then why is it acceptable in BPS schools? I have worked in the BPS public school system for over 16 years. Metal detectors and aggressive police officers, which I've witnessed personally, don't build trust, security, or instill any of the things our students need to be happy, healthy, productive members of society and people that are ready to change the world. The environment we have created for our young learners to thrive in does anything but allow them to their full potential? There's my time. This will be given to you, you can read the rest of my statement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson. Our next speaker is Mike Heishman. Mr. Heishman?
Hello. Mike Heishman, Dorchester, member of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. Ever since the publicly watched murder of George Floyd, which millions around the world have witnessed, there has been an upsurge of resistance against racism in Boston, around our nation, and solidarity demonstrations around the world. Mayor Walsh has declared racism to be a health crisis and resubmitted his budget with a 20% cut in the police overtime and the transfer of these funds for programs that would promote public health and safety. At our last school committee meeting, the superintendent and every member of the school committee spoke out passionately against racism. I wonder how much the taking of a knee by police officers and elected officials, the strong words by leaders of major corporations, and the strong words of our public officials will end up with either no actions, tiny reforms, or transformative changes. I hope the school department will back up its strong words and embrace transformational change. Every year, the mayor proposes a budget to the school committee and city council support that does not provide sufficient resources to provide a quality building and a quality education for all of our children. The coronavirus makes the reopening of schools far more challenging for school year 2020-2021. Since our last meeting on June 10th, I participated in discussions about the reopening of the schools. I want to thank the superintendent of the school department for beginning to create a plan and the beginning of their efforts to communicate with the public. I want to make some recommendations. One, the superintendent presented plans to the school committee and public of how the department is going to reach out to all the stakeholders. There could be no successful plan without the vigorous participation of the community. Two, schools should not be reopened unless we are going to do everything in our to have the safest possible schools and a quality education for every child. I am frightened that neither of these will be done. The school department should follow Evelyn Ray's advice and create and submit a supplemental budget to the mayor requesting enough funds to accomplish both objectives. Mayor Walsh's new budget calls for a tiny cut in the police budget.
Ms. Heishman? Excuse me, Ms. Heishman. You're past, I'm afraid you're past your time. Would you please send me your written comments to share with the committee?
I will, if you've got a promise, you're going to read it, though.
Yes, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Roseanne Lobato, and she'll be followed by Natasha Scott and Frank Hart. If you could please virtually raise your hand. Ms. Lobato?
Yes.
Welcome.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Roseanne Lobato. I am the mother of Robert Anthony Spader Jr. I express my deepest disappointment to learn that Ms. Richmond will no longer be my son's teacher. Parents never received any notification from Burke High School about this matter. Students have already suffered greatly when Boston Public School closed the previous school, West Roxbury Academy. We families got a firm promise from the school community that the teacher would continue to stay with their students. It seems that we got only an empty promise. Like one student said at the meeting, Boston Public Schools take away our home, West Roxbury Academy, and now Boston Public School wants to take our mother away, our teachers. Mrs. Richmond has had a lot of experience and expertise working with children with autism. She knows all her students need very well, and she working hard for them to learn. Taking Mrs. Richmond's position certainly will cause anxiety among the students. Besides Mrs. Richmond, we learned that Mr. Silver exceeded another teacher from the ABA program, Mrs. Dykes. We are in the middle of a pandemic. Families have to deal with remote learning, and to have their students return to school in September and have to acclimate to a new teacher who does not know them at all is just plain wrong. Our children are not numbers. They are human beings and deserve to be respected. Please, just close your eyes for a moment. Imagine that your child has autism, and he is a student in Mrs. Richmond's class for many years. Now, your child has a few months left in school, and the new headmaster has decided to dismiss Mrs. Richmond for her position. Is that right? Focus on children is the motto of Boston Public School. Therefore, teachers matter to their students very much. Our children have disabilities, but they matter to us. Rehiring Mrs. Richmond and Mrs. Dyke is what is right for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lobato. Our next speaker is Natasha Scott. Natasha?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Natasha Scott, and I'm the current K-12 Director of History and Social Studies, a position I have gradually worked towards after 14 years in the district. Unfortunately, it is also one of the positions that have been eliminated as of August 31st. I'm here today to practice, to model best practices in civic education and to provide a holistic view of the work done by my small but mighty team of four. As the current social and political climate has shown us now, more than ever, we need to be supporting our teachers and students while they deepen their civic knowledge, skills, and dispositions and experiences necessary to engage with our democracy. Over the past several years, the BPS History Department has been focusing on doing just that. We collaborated with the City of Boston Election Department and BSAC to facilitate this Student Poll Worker Program on Election Day with the Massachusetts Black and Latino Legislative Caucus to design a monthly Civics Day on the Hill for our eighth grade students, with the City of Boston Office of Youth Engagement and Employment to help increase student participation, Vote Fest focused on capital improvement projects, with King Boston to facilitate the annual MLK essay competition, with the Office of English Learners to engage our students in sharing their stories of immigration with BPS teachers, to fund and develop an ethnic studies course, with various institutions to support the design of summer learning institutes that address the critical roles of many of our marginalized populations. Beyond professional development and place-based learning, we built multiple teacher websites. We've designed microunits that were used by DESI as a model for best practice in History and Social Studies instruction during remote learning, brought together institutions across the city of Boston to participate in a civics collaborative and a place-based learning collaborative. We've been awarded multiple grants by DESI, totally for approximately $72,000 for civic education and financial literacy. To sum, this may seem like a running to-do list. However, I want you to take a moment and consider the hours of relationship building, collaborating, planning, facilitating, and selecting that must have happened behind the scenes to have these opportunities run smoothly for our teachers and students. All of this was done in addition to supporting our teachers and leaders with day-to-day concerns. With all of this, I left wondering and I worry, how will BPS continue to improve education to deepen civic knowledge, skills, and dispositions across K-12? And how do we ensure our BPS students have equitable access to standards and line instructional resources across all content areas? And in the end, who will carry on the work of these programs that have taken years to establish? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Our next speaker is Frank Hart. Mr. Hart?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, good evening to everyone. I'd just like to thank each and every one of you for staying together, and especially you, Dr. Silas, for moving forward in these times here, these new times, these challenging times. But they will be rewarded. And I want to thank you for the work that you all are doing, the support that you're giving. Because there's a lot of knots in the rope, but they will be untangled. Some easier than others. There are some comments that I do have, and I won't be pulled along. Remote learning, one. And school reopening, too. So on to remote learning, from what I have heard from parents, is that it can be pretty frustrating. So, and I mean frustrating in terms of trying to operate the device, trying to become a norm in a sense into their home while they have BPS as well as in their home. And it's not easy for them. And I would like to see BPS certainly support those parents, really support them, more so than what has been in terms of remote learning.
Thirty seconds.
I would like to see folks pull together a call center for them, specifically for them. And the reopening of the schools, I can't wait to hear what happens at the next school committee meeting for the plan going forward. So I would just like to, again, thank y'all for moving forward in these difficult times, the challenging times. And I'll stay tuned for more.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Our next speaker is Michael Kincaid, and he'll be followed by Maria Mora. Mr. Kincaid?
Oh, okay. I assume you can hear me?
Yes, welcome.
All right. I have intended for this to be my last Boston School Committee hearing. My son Willie was going to join us, but he was invited to a socially-distanced, safe event, and we weren't passing that up because there are so few. So tonight, I'm here for two things. First of all, I'm here to say thank you. I'm here to say thank you on behalf of my son and my family. For those who don't know, Willie has graduated. He is participating in an extended school year, but theoretically, he is done. And I also, I want to say thank you to the teachers, too many for me to name because I'll forget some, and I don't want to insult them, but helping push my son to achieve what he needed to achieve, to be done with school, and to prepare for the next chapter in his life. Now, having said that, you got, those of you who know me know, and by the way, there is going to be a big giant party, an invitation will be sent out. But those of you who know me know, I always, I start with praise, and then I've got to put some things on the table. I am so looking forward to being done, but I leave with a heavy heart because as Roseanne spoke earlier, her son is in the same program that Willie just graduated from, which came from the West Roxbury Education Complex, the former West Roxbury Education Complex. And I am concerned about that program, although I'm no longer going to be part of it.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. We've lost two teachers, as you heard, and there's nobody answering the question, are we going to fill the place of the students that have moved on like Willie? Because if the intent is to let the program die out, I hope that doesn't happen. And the parents need you guys to be their advocate because a few parents that I've talked to, I've heard, they don't know what to say. They've come before you. So in closing, I need, please, guys, keep an eye on our program. And Superintendent, welcome to Boston. Thank you very much. By the way, Willie will probably be here for the July 22nd meeting, if he doesn't get a better invitation.
Thank you, Mr. Kincaid, and congratulations on Willie's graduation. I just found out that another speaker has joined us who had some technical difficulties earlier. Chrisan Hill? Is Ms. Hill with us? Ms. Hill? Okay, we'll try again. Ms. Hill? Our next speaker is Maria Muera. And she'll be followed by Josue Sakata. If you could please virtually raise your hand. Ms. Mora?
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
Hi.
I'm in Mora.
Okay, Ms. Mora, please begin.
Is our interpreter here? Is our interpreter here?
Oh.
The Portuguese interpreter?
Pode falar? Pode falar em português que estou aqui?
Eu sou uma, eu sou capa burgiana, eu não sei se, okay, which one?
Oh, it's Cabo Verdean, the other interpreter, please.
Can you say Cabo Verdean, Creole interpreter, Jose?
Mr. Correia, are you with us? There we go, Mr. Correia. Mr. Correia, are you with us?
Hello?
Hello? Hello?
O intérprete Cabo Verdean está aí porque eu falo português, posso ajudá-lo?
Okay. Boa tarde a todos e a todas.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Agradeço oportunidade de apresentar as notícias.
I take the opportunity for to be speaking this morning.
Sou Maria Mora, mãe de uma criança especial de seis anos, de Blackstone.
How old?
Seis anos.
Eu sou uma mãe, I'm a mom for a child of ten years old.
Escola de Blackstone.
On the Blackstone School?
Meu filho tem vários problemas associados e necessita vários recursos.
My son has a very many problems associated with health issues.
Será que pode imaginar o que significa escolher?
Pode falar, escolher o quê?
Se separar dos filhos uma força maior à procura de oportunidade por um outro com mais necessidade.
Can you imagine how hard it is to separate the children with more difficult needs?
Pois este é o meu caso.
This is my case.
Eu gostaria que isso acontecesse na plenitude.
I would like that this happen within the plenitude, that you take care of the special needs.
O meu filho começar a praticar os primeiros passos a quatro meses.
My son, he started to give his first steps about four months ago.
Ele necessita de natação, não apenas com uma atividade.
He needs swimming, not just as an activity.
Mas sim como uma terapia.
But as a therapy.
A escola precisa de mais acesso para os alunos carregantes.
The school needs more access for the kids with wheelchair needs.
Que tem de dar muitas voltas para ter acesso nas locações dentro da escola.
They need to go right now for many turns for to be accessed to the school.
E isso lhes tira o conforto.
And just take them out the comfort.
É fácil encontrar programas depois das aulas para as crianças normais.
It's very easy to find after school for normal kids.
Mas para as crianças necessárias especiais não.
But for the special kids, there is not.
Sabendo que ensinar uma criança com multidificência exige uma formação adequada para atuar.
I know that for to teach special kids, you need a better formation, a better education.
Isso significa que a escola necessita de um programa de muitas aulas para apoiar essas crianças.
So, that means that the school needs after-school program for to help those special needs for the kids.
Muitas vezes os pais, mesmo que queiram, não conseguem lhes ajudar não estando capacitado para lhes ajudar.
Many times the parents want, but they have no capacity for to help the kids in their needs.
Sem falar de que muitos têm de trabalhar para sustentar as necessidades básicas dessas crianças.
And the most of them, they need to work for to support the needs, to support, feed those kids.
Thirty seconds.
Seio de stress, correndo, risco de atrasos para chegar a tempo para pegar o filho na escola ou no transporte escolar.
Many times they need to run for to be able to take the kids after school or on a bus.
Ainda mais chegando em casa, em vez de dar uma atenção especial e carinhosa aos nossos filhos.
And when we get home, we need to give attention especially for our kids.
Estão de lado de sua mão contabilizando os pequenos recursos que temos.
Many times we are with the pencil on our hands, trying to make the counts for to see our needs in home.
Para formar as necessidades básicas dos nossos filhos.
For to be able to maintain the basic needs for our kids.
Esta é a realidade de muitos.
That is the reality for the many of us.
Tem tudo isso a ver com a educação de nossas crianças.
Já acabou seu tempo, minha Maria.
Okay.
Ms. Maya, would you let Ms. Mora know that her time is expired?
Yes, I just said to her.
Ms. Mora, obrigado. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time.
Obrigado, Maria.
And thank you, Ms. Maya, for pitching in.
Not my language, but I did my best.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Before we move on, we'll try one more time for Chrisan Hill, who I see is with us, speaking for Kavanna Stewart. Ms. Hill?
Hi. My name is Chrisan Hill. I'm representing for my sister. Her name is Kavanna Stewart. My name is Chrisan Hill, a resident of Dorchester, a BPS graduate from the Berk, and sister Kavanna, who is still in BPS and has Down Syndrome. My mom and I have worked hard to support inclusive opportunities for Kavanna. During remote learning, I have been Kavanna's support as my mom continues to work. I sat in on her Zoom classes with her, have been in consistent contact with her teachers. We have fought for her to be in an inclusive classroom and school since she has been part of BPS since kindergarten. I know that inclusion is the best experience for my sister. I want her to grow academically and socially with her peers. She has tremendous inclusion, and there are also many concerns we have, not because of inclusion, but because of inclusion is not done right. I know that as a Jamaican immigrant in Boston, I know that we have had to fight even more to make sure that Kavanna has the same inclusive experiences as her white peers. We have, we have had to fight and make sure she has enough specialized support so that she has access to middle school curriculum. I believe her teachers are always working hard to support her. They can't do better without more. There have been too many teachers who have been both her special educator and general educator teachers. This is not right. One teacher can't do the job of two. They can't provide a meaningful educational curriculum without more support. Four years she has been on the waitlist to join the Henderson School community. We have had to hire lawyers, consultants, and advocates to help us fight. Families shouldn't have to fight for their children to receive the education they deserve. I hope BPS provides.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. If you could send your written comments to me by email, I'll share them with the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. Next, we have Josue Sakata, followed by Peggy Borgard and Monica Singletary. If you can, please raise your hands virtually. Josue?
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the last six years, I have served the Boston Public Schools and its children as an Assistant Director for the History and Social Studies Department. Through my position, I discovered that Boston is a vibrant, diverse place. When my native language is spoken, it is a city that values hard work, innovation, history, and justice. I have made great teachers, great partners, and dynamic students through my work. I have worked with the teachers campaigning for Ethnic Studies. My department and I are the central office persons Jessica Tang mentioned that are working to promote Ethnic Studies in Boston. As a result, my work, which has been cast aside by higher-ups in academics, five dynamic teachers have just completed an Ethnic Studies course through a work group I spearheaded. Thanks to grant funding I was able to obtain from the Nobel Foundation and Teaching Tolerance. With that said, I just wanted to be on record to state that this hasty decision to eliminate academic departments like math, English, science, and history is a disservice to teachers, students, and Boston, and it should be reconsidered. Teachers are learning from other teachers is powerful. Without proper support and thought partnership, different areas will, different ideas will come and go. Some will stick and others won't. And don't be surprised if the bad ideas stick because there is no support or guidance. An academic department like the one I belong to is useful in helping school administrators connect with larger ideas and around sound practices and standards that teachers need to meet to be effective educators. We are clearing houses for resources carefully embedded so that teachers do not have to spend time creating and finding resources. The elimination of academics is a disservice to students. I understand autonomy is a force in BPS, but we have so much autonomy that our high-mobility students suffer as a result of it. Our department has worked hard on teaching educators the standards in order to build some semblance of cohesion so that students don't find themselves lost in translation when they move schools. Finally, the elimination of academics is a disservice to Boston. I know for a fact from the history perspective, our content is important essence of the city. Our partners have been shocked to know that the superintendent has eliminated content. We have been connected with our teachers to great opportunities for perception or learning, work with them on developing curriculum, and provide them, provide them place-based learning opportunities for both teachers and students. As a result, our students and teachers can see themselves as part of the fabric that makes Boston Boston. I understand change, but when changes like this is hastily planned out and counter the vision and strategic initiatives of the district, this is a disservice. By the way, the elimination of the academic content departments, you have, you have pushed out six educators of color. Ironic for a district that wants to retain educators of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sakata. Our next speaker is Peggy Borgard. Welcome. Ms. Borgard? Yes.
Okay. Hello, everybody. It's been awesome to hear everybody speak, my first meeting. I want to announce, my name is Peggy Borgard Dutra, and my son Mateo has been in the Young Achievers School for the past two years. He started in K-0 and moved on to K-1 as an inclusion student. My husband and I value Mateo's being in an inclusion classroom. He is on an IEP, and I appreciate that he has made considerable progress with the phenomenal Ms. Alves as his teacher this year. Mateo's a very social kid. He has blossomed in many ways in school. His speech has grown by leaps and bounds as a result of his social interaction with other students, those with and without disabilities. We also believe that Mateo would make more improvement if he was in an inclusive classroom with more than one certified teacher. Right now, my son experienced the benefits of inclusion. However, his learning is regularly interrupted when he's pulled out of the classroom to receive his special education services. There, if there were two teachers in Mateo's classroom, he'd be able to receive his services inside the classroom, and he would not have to miss out on learning experiences with his peers. Morning meetings, social ops, choice time, things to that effect, which little kids love. Myself, I'm a special education teacher, and I've seen the strong benefits of having more than one certified teacher in the classroom. I'm aware that some schools in Boston have inclusion program with more than one teacher, and they're able to meet the needs of all students. I hope the same thing for our Young Achiever students where Mateo is attending. Just like other parents, I want the best for my son. I expect you, Superintendent, and the members of the school committee to want the best for every student. I expect you to advocate for the best inclusion model for all BPS students, not just for some. Next year, Mateo's going to be in K-2. The longer we wait for the, you guys, for the right thing, the less students are going to get in education. So, I end with saying that thank you so much for giving me this time. I hope that you'll be able to implement this in the next school year.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Monica Singletary, but I don't see her in our, with us today. So, if you can make sure that you're, please, signed in under the name with which you signed up for public comment, that will help us identify you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes, and she'll be followed by Cecil Carey. Ms. Reyes?
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great. My name is Ruby Reyes. I'm the Director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance, and we need a collective process to develop the operational side of the strategic plan with parents, students, and educators. Currently, BPS has been working internally, which is what has been wrong with central office for so long. Stop only working internally. Families and educators need to be included in major decision-making, not just by participating in community meetings, but in seeing their questions, concerns, and problem-solving in the planning and decision-making. Most recently, BPS proposed to adopt the MasCor as additional requirements for graduation. School communities need resources to be able to offer MasCor requirements. How BPS will fund MasCor in schools that are already experiencing budget cuts has not been shared. This is in addition to proposed high school reconfiguration plans that have been developed with principals, leaving out families and educators. The Memorandum of Understanding signed with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education also had no community process. We still have not heard what the process will be around the 60 days of negotiation about some of the MOU details, which supposedly began on May 18th. We continue to hear nothing about the Kaleidoscope Network being forced upon our East Boston and Charlestown schools that need additional resources rather than more top-down decision-making from DESI and BPS. What's more is, in the midst of all this drastic changes, the Central Office Academic Department was eliminated. BPS Central Office needs to prioritize community voices. As we prepare for the reopening of schools, we ask that you establish a supported, school-based stakeholder team that can hold decision-making power at the school level. Families need to be communicated with and about what will happen in the summer in preparation for school reopening. What facility upgrades will happen in each building? What will be the policy for families to keep their students at home? What will be the protocol if someone in a school community tests positive for COVID? What will be the process for ensuring families are communicated with on a regular basis? Unilateral decisions and vague responses create further trauma. We all fail when BPS doesn't work for our children. With the coronavirus, the stakes are much higher, and we can't afford to fail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Our next speaker is Cecil Carey, followed by Sheena Kowalowski and Katie Lee.
Welcome. My name is Cecil Carey. I'm a teacher at Charlestown High School. I wanted to start by thanking those who spoke for the need for inclusion done right, as well as thanking Ruby for the need for a new process as opposed to the MOU, top-down MOU that was signed that affects Charlestown High. I'm here today as a member of BTU's Ethnic Studies Now Committee to speak on Black Lives Matter at schools' demand to mandate Ethnic Studies coursework. For the past two years, our committee has worked tirelessly with local and national partners to study best practices in Ethnic Studies, build a cohort of committed teachers, and create a movement to bring Ethnic Studies to Boston. We are excited that the superintendent has included Ethnic Studies in her strategic plan and that concrete steps have been taken to make Ethnic Studies a reality. Specifically, BPS has partnered with UMass Boston's Kanala Institute to support curricular development. We are excited that BPS has chosen to invest in a true community partner for this work. However, our research has shown that even the best Ethnic Studies curricula will fail without thoughtful implementation that includes shared public accountability and collaboration. We have studied the successes of Ethnic Studies in places like San Francisco and Tucson. We have also studied the failures, most notably just south of us in Providence, Rhode Island. Ethnic Studies is not simply multicultural history. Implementing Ethnic Studies successfully requires sustained support and funding through professional development, ongoing coaching, and meaningful community involvement. To this end, we have created a proposal with specific recommendations for next steps the district should take. I have emailed this proposal and our vision to Ms. Sullivan. My comrades will speak more on our group's history and rationale. My comrades will speak more on our group's history and rationale for this proposal. I will close by saying that I hope BPS will involve teachers, students, and community members moving forward to achieve our shared goal of bringing an impactful, anti-racist, transformative, and sustainable ethnic studies program to Boston. Just like we need inclusion done right, we need ethnic studies done right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Our next speaker is Sheena Kowalowski. Welcome. Sheena?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. I am Sheena Kowalowski, an educator at the Marietta Umana Academy in East Boston, and I'm also a member of the Ethnic Studies Now Committee. As a member of the committee, I had the pleasure of being on a call this afternoon with the educators from the Holyoke Ethnic Studies Program. There was something that one of the educators said to me that really resonated with me. She said, "People need to understand that ethnic studies is not multicultural education." Our Ethnic Studies Committee understands this key difference between ethnic studies coursework and other kinds of historical and cultural studies. The Ethnic Studies Curriculum Group has worked, many of us voluntarily, for more than a year and a half to design a student-centered, three-unit ethnic studies curriculum. The curriculum is designed for ninth graders, but it is adaptable to all grades, which is something that was proven when one of the committee members piloted it with students as young as sixth grade. Our curriculum is built on research-based frameworks and pedagogies that provides a safe environment for all students and staff to explore the history and experiences of people of color and to collaboratively read the world, all while honoring and affirming their intersectional identities. Through our ethnic studies course, students and educators will develop their capacity to interrogate, excuse me, to interrogate systems of power and to, while building solidarities in order to realize a world without racism and other forms of oppression. The course, you know, these, these life skills that students and staff need alike, need now more than ever. It is for these reasons that the Ethnic Studies Now Committee and our endorsers are adamant that the focus of our collective energies and finances be poured into helping our committee pilot a year-long course in order to further develop the work that is already being done by my colleagues and I in our Ethnic Studies Now Committee. Tabutane, thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Katie Lee. Ms. Lee?
Ms. Lee, welcome. Yes, can you hear me? My name is Katie Lee. I'm a Charleston High School teacher and a member of the Ethnic Studies Now Committee and one of the teachers writing the curriculum for the Ethnic Studies pilot. Ethnic studies literally changed my life. I was a biopremat major when I entered college and graduated as a self-designed Asian-American Studies major and African Studies minor. Most people understand that ethnic studies is academic, but don't get it that it's also intensely personal. Teachers and students must grapple with how oppression, trauma, and powerful institutions affect their lives and how to transform them on a personal and systemic level. So having a good curriculum or a great teacher isn't enough. Attending a few days of PD isn't enough. Being inspired is not the same thing as being prepared. Through a small grant, I was asked to develop and teach an eight-session ethnic studies course for six teachers based on the pilot curriculum. I modeled pedagogy and discussed instruction, but most of the time, teachers applied theoretical frameworks to their lived experiences. They asked themselves questions like, "What is it like to be a Puerto Rican black man teaching Salvadorians in Eastie?" Or, "How does being a South Asian queer woman affect my relationship with my family?" Or, "How has believing English as the language of success impacted the erasure of my own language?" We did our internal work, and it took time. In fact, the overwhelming feedback was that eight sessions wasn't enough. We are now running this course again for a group of 15 teachers. Curriculum is important, but so is the commitment to prepare ethnic studies teachers. This takes weeks, months, and sometimes even years. The first time teachers do this kind of personal internal work can't be in front of students. Ethnic studies has a potential to be liberatory and transformative. It also has a potential to be otherwise. We need to make sure teachers are prepared. That is why our proposal calls to fund a full-time coach position within the district for a long-term, sustainable version, vision of ethnic studies. An ethnic studies coach can help guide teachers to continue their own journeys to help them make adjustments in their classrooms. Doing the internal work, knowing communities well, and committing to collective growth is the only way we can set up ethnic studies teachers for success. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Our next speakers are Leila Cable, Mark Knapp, and Ann Marie Alder. You could please raise your hands virtually. Ms. Cable?
Good evening. I'm Leila Cable, a retired Boston teacher who taught reading, kindergarten, and ESL. As an educated immigrant, moving back to the US from our professional overseas jobs to attend graduate work with my American husband and two young children, I was not ready for my children to face the issues they faced throughout their school years. My son expressed his views and wrote about his travels. The teacher said it was nice. The kids called him a towel head because of his mother's ethnicity and his father's work in the desert. The lack of coursework on the other's ethnicity, linguistic diversity, culture, and social lives of minority children in schools was astounding. Native American, African American, Latino, and Asian children saw no historical mention of their ancestry, culture, and the hows and whys of their lives. School was foreign to them. Our BTU Ethnic Studies Now group that I belong to for over two years now had brought the proposal to the school department. This, I believe, is what Boston needs. But the success of this hinges on several factors, one of which is a steering committee. The committee will keep ethnic studies well anchored. A mixture of important stakeholders are needed. The steering committee must include educators who have toiled to make ethnic studies a reality from our group, other teachers who worked individually, Kanala UMass, which Boston, to its credit, has just asked to join us, school personnel, teacher trainers, and the coach should be represented. Parents and students must be brought in at time to voice their views, offer their perspectives, and be an authentic voice for their culture of the oppressed. A community group that's involved and have knowledge of students' social justice issues can be part, but we don't need to pay another consultant big fees. The steering committee will share responsibility for decisions and provide meaningful input in a democratic fashion, but not just another rubber stamp. The steering committee will allow people to know how to do the work so the program can be successful. Thank you for hearing this.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Knapp. Welcome.
Yes, hi. You can hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mark Knapp, a teacher in BPS. And congratulations to all finishing this very difficult school year. I apologize that my own quarantine grooming has not been stellar either. As we look into the uncertain future, it's clear that many challenges we will need to overcome to be effective educators for all students. And addressing inequalities, highlighted previously by our union president, will be at the very core of these challenges. Last Monday, I completed my 20th year teaching in BPS in a ninth-grade biology inclusion classroom at Josiah Quincy Upper School. JQS, the first urban public school to provide an IB for all education. This means any student, regardless of their levels, is taught an international baccalaureate education. And in case you aren't familiar with IB, their mission aims to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a better and more peaceful world through intercultural understanding and respect. This statement should also go hand-in-hand with any successful full-inclusion model classroom. These classrooms must never be considered a cost-cutting measure. Instead, inclusion classrooms should be considered the ideal model to address inequity in public education. To accomplish this will require consistent sharing of best practices and equitable funding that is based on school-to-district data to understand why some schools continue to be more successful implementing this model than others. If our intentions as a school district are sincere, as I believe they are, we can use the inclusion model to show the country how successful, equitable, urban public education is done right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Marie Alder. Ms. Alder?
Can you hear me? Okay. Okay. Hello, my name is Ann Marie Alder. My twin sister and I are both sixth graders, sixth-grade students at Up Academy Boston. We were former students at the Winthrop School in Dorchester. Coming from an alternative school due to space and other schools going to Up Academy was a great relief. I love Up Academy because of the support we've received from my teachers as students who have IEPs. Learning to believe in myself and being pushed with love the whole way through. I learned a new passion for learning and trying to give it my all and being treated as a family member. I wasn't or ever felt bullied. Feeling safe and protected important is important to me and my sister, as well as my mom. Up Academy Boston became more than just a school to us. It became our home. Up Academy is our family. From entering the school, being welcomed, being welcomed by Mr. and Mrs. Fontanis and Mr. Facey with, with the biggest smile and hugs to the very end of the day and getting the same hugs and smile and knowing they were waiting for us the next day. When COVID-19 started, I realized how much I loved and missed my teachers. Miss Andrew May, Mr. Carter, and Ms. Rojas are the best, are my best friends. I then realized I wasn't going to be able to see them again, and I was going to miss the games, movie nights, meetings, and having members of the network. Of the network. Like Mr. Jackson came in and be a, be part of these events, like playing basketballs with the students and the teachers, having dinner with the students before the meetings, and I didn't even know there was a network till now. Keeping Up Academy Boston shouldn't be a debate. It should be a must. Up Academy Boston is this, is my safe place when I'm not home. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you guys. Please keep my school open.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Michael Berger, followed by John Mudd and Andrew Jones. If you could please raise your hands virtually. Mr. Berger? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the school committee, Superintendent Casellius, uh, Caselli, sorry, and viewers at home. I want to thank you for your endurance. I don't know if all the meetings are this long, but I'm impressed with everyone. My name is Michael Berger, and I teach computer science at Madison Park Technical Vocational High School. I'm also the proud parent of two BPS graduates this year who spent their entire 12 years in Boston Public Schools. I'm here to support the Demilitarize BPS Campaign. I believe that having metal detectors and school resource officers, also known as SROs, in my school tells my students that we fear them and don't trust them. If we treat our students like prisoners, they will not trust us nor believe we have their best interests at heart. They may also feel warehoused rather than respected. I don't believe metal detectors and SROs make our school safer for the students or the staff. Madison Park is physically connected to the John D. O'Brien High School. Yet the O'Brien, as far as I understand, does not have metal detectors at its front entrance. What does that say to our students? Since students can enter the O'Brien and then enter Madison Park, the metal detectors at Madison Park are a psychological deterrent, but not a physical one. I also believe that student resource officers, as a physical presence, send the message to our students, "We don't trust you. We are watching you. You are a threat." Despite them often being warm and caring people who befriend our students, their uniforms and status as police officers send an antagonistic message to our students. This is not the message I want to, I want to hear. Thank you. 30 seconds, okay, or 17. I was privileged in all meetings of the word to attend a small, private school on a hill in an old farm in Southern New Hampshire. The school was beautiful, small, rustic, and tranquil. The contrast between my high school and Madison is stark. Please demilitarize BPS by removing all metal detectors in Boston Police SROs and replace them with social workers and family liaisons. Thank you for your support and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Berger. Our next speaker is John Mudd. Mr. Mudd?
Did I unmute?
You did. Welcome.
Okay. Following up on the ELL Task Force report at the last meeting, I want to reinforce the importance of access to native language for our EL students before you hear the Office of English Learners' presentation at your next meeting. I asked Eileen de los Reyes and Rhea Serpa to help me understand the importance of access to native language. I took notes. They're more eloquent than me. Here is my synthesis on the role of language in academic learning. Language mediates access to learning. The use of native language enables access to academic content. Without communication, there is no learning. Without a language of communication, students are denied the opportunity to learn. Without access to the home language in school, there's little chance for ELL students to reach grade level. Monolingual teachers cannot give directions in a language that the students understand. This reality is especially true for English learners with disabilities. Further, language is the soul of culture. Home language is a language of family love. The use of home language honors the student's family. Instead of feeling shame, anxiety, or trauma, as many students experience today, we want our students to feel respect for their home language, their family, their culture as they learn and adapt to a new language and culture. The superintendent is committed to using the Look Mill and developing a strategy there to, which enables us to use more native language in our classrooms. But this goes beyond just OEL. Human capital, and each school must place priority on language capability in hiring and teacher assignment. And the academics division must provide curriculum content and materials. The racial equity planning tool should highlight language as well as race in its title and content in the evaluation of the opportunity to learn for marginalized students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Mr. Lacanto, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you to all the speakers this evening. I know we had a wide variety of speakers and a wide variety of topics, and so we always appreciate folks, especially during these times, taking the time out to share with us their views. So we'll continue with our work and we'll continue with our meeting. Before we move on to the action items, we've changed up our schedule a little bit tonight to accommodate both the report and then taking action on that report's recommendation in something you heard about a little bit earlier when we opened our meet, our meeting, which was now about two and a half hours ago. We're going to receive a report right now on a recommendation from the superintendent that we will take action on in just a short while longer when we get to the, the action items portion of the calendar. And that's the naming of the sensory room at the Tynan Elementary School in honor of Ambassador Raymond Del Flynn, who has rejoined us on the broadcast here. Now, for many of you who have been with us, fellow Bostonians for many years, Ray Flynn needs no introduction. As you know, Mayor Flynn served three terms in that position from 1984 until 1993, when at that time, he was appointed as ambassador on behalf of the United States to the Vatican. He was appointed by President Bill Clinton, and he served in that role from 1993 to 1997. He's also the father of current-day Boston City Councilor Ed Flynn, who represents Ambassador Flynn's home district, District Two, that covers South Boston, Chinatown, and other parts of downtown. So we're honored to have Ambassador Flynn joining us this evening. We're also honored to have Ms. Leslie Gant, who has joined us as well, the principal of the Tynan Elementary School. I'm going to ask you, Principal Gant, to start us off and give us a brief report, and then we'll allow Ambassador Flynn to say a few words.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Caselli, and Chair Lacanto, and all school committee members for reviewing the request to dedicate the sensory room at the Joseph Tynan Elementary School in honor of Ambassador Raymond Flynn. I appreciate your time and your consideration. We worked with our elementary superintendent and completed the required steps to make this formal request per the documents we submitted to school committee for review. I would like to share with you all why this request is being made. Ambassador Raymond Flynn is a dedicated public servant who served the city of Boston beginning in 1971. He was a state rep, city councilor, mayor of Boston. He was a state rep, city councilor, mayor of Boston, and ambassador to the Vatican. In his role as state representative, he co-authored legislation that was the basis for Chapter 766, which is the Massachusetts law which guarantees the rights of all young people with special needs ages three to 22 to an educational program best suited to their needs. Chapter 766 is in fact the guiding document for federal special education utilized across the United States of America. Ambassador Flynn has been a longtime champion of all children with special needs in the city of Boston and across Massachusetts. His devotion to equity and inclusion ensured that every town in Massachusetts would appropriately fund the services for special education students, thus allowing every child to be educated in the cities and towns in which they resided. On March 11, 2020, the Tynan School Site Council made a proposal to name the sensory room, which was funded by the Rotary Club of Needham in honor of Ambassador Flynn, as we believed this was a wonderful way to honor the son of Sophie. The vote was unanimous to name the sensory room in honor of Ambassador Flynn. It gives me great pleasure to respectfully request the approval of the school committee for the naming of the Ambassador Flynn Sensory Room at the Joseph Tynan Elementary School. I would also like to take a moment just to thank Ambassador Flynn for his kindness and support of the Tynan community. He has just really been a wonderful presence for the Tynan school. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Principal Gant. And before I open it up to members for questions and discussion, I did want to give an opportunity once again to Ambassador Flynn to say a few words. Ambassador, would you join us? It looks like we might be having a little bit of technical difficulties with Ambassador Flynn's connection. So perhaps we can start, excuse me, with comments and questions from the committee. And just as we're getting going there, I'd ask members to virtually raise your hands if you'd like to submit any comments or questions. And I will note as well that I want to take a special moment to thank Ms. Gant for leading her school through the process that's laid out in a school committee policy and Superintendent Circular for the naming of schools as well as school properties. We had a recent effort with the Higginson School and the naming of a playground on behalf of one of their retiring principals in the last year and a few other renaming processes that have happened over the last few years. And I know we've heard in a number of occasions from our former member, Meg Campbell, who's been working to increase the number of schools that have been named after women in Boston. Currently, out of 125 schools, we have less than 10 named for women. And so I thank Principal Gant for monitoring good practices here. And I'd also like to raise this up as a model for other schools that may be thinking about taking action on naming either properties or the school itself. So I'll open it up now to members. Looks like Mr. Tran is ready with a comment.
Good evening, my colleagues. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Flynn. I would like to take this opportunity to express my deep gratitude to Mayor Flynn for all his works regarding civil rights. As a matter of fact, I was one of your earliest employee when the Boston Human Rights Commission was established back in 1984. And I still remember the day that we stand on the common to celebrate the category of sexual orientation to be recognized as one of the protected categories. And I think that was pretty much one of your highlights during your administration. Aside from that, the Boston community disorder unit under your administration was spectacular. You were one of the very few people that I admire for diversifying the police force of Boston. As a matter of fact, you were the first mayor that hired Vietnamese-American police officers. This body, the Boston School Committee body, may not be as diverse as now without your work. And the first, I still remember the first majorly appointed body that was appointed by you. An Asian-American was appointed on. Before that, I don't believe there was none. So for all that, I appreciate you and I thank you for your lifelong dedication to civil rights. One little tidbit. I used to sit next to you during the Christmas celebration, the mass celebration at the cathedral. And you always attended the Christmas mass with the Vietnamese community. So with all that said, I wholeheartedly agree with the dedication of this office to your name. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Tran. I appreciate your eloquent words. And want to open up the floor to other members and for questions or comments. Ms. Robinson?
Yes, yeah. I want to join the committee in thanking Ambassador Flynn, former Mayor Flynn, for all of the wonderful work that he has done for the city over the years, particularly during some of our city's hardest moments. It's wonderful to see this program be dedicated to him in South Boston, his hometown, and for all of our young children to learn about the contributions of a living legend that they will see and experience in such a sensory room to a special space in a school and hope we will have many more. And thank you, school leader, also for your work in getting this to happen. I have to say, it's an amazing day for me to hear a black woman lead a school in South Boston with such pride. I mean, I know our city has come a long way in many ways for that event alone to happen. So congratulations to you and to all the work that you and your school have been doing on behalf of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Other questions or comments? Ms. O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just want to say, Principal Gant, thank you for bringing this forward to us and following the procedure. Like Ms. Robinson said, I'm quite touched that this is a censoring room for our students. This is a lot different from what is typically done. And this is blending the old and the new. And I love the fact that you're doing it in honor of Ambassador Flynn. I'm sorry, he is not on the screen with us anymore. But, Mr. Tron, I have to say thank you to my fellow member, Mr. Tron, for your comments because I learned a lot about Ambassador Flynn's commitment to many different communities in the city by your comments. So thank you for what you shared with us. And like my fellow members, I certainly support this. So thank you, Principal Gant, to you and your school community.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Vice Chair Oliver Davila?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Principal Gant. I don't want to repeat what Ms. Robinson said, but it's so important. So thank you. Just want to say thank you to former Mayor Flynn for so many things. I think all the work you did on economic development, job opportunities, housing, and, you know, all at the same time, while being a super athlete and coaching youth sports, which to me says a lot about a person who's very busy but still has the time to spend with young people. And also all of your writing, I mean, what is it that you don't do? So I wholeheartedly support this. And again, thank you for all of your work in Boston.
Thank you, Vice Chair. And I'd echo that as well. My wife's a Providence College grad, same as Mayor Flynn. And so I've known his legacy for a long time and certainly the legacy that he leaves here in Boston. And particularly in these times, I think many of us think back to his first mayoral race with Mr. King, Mr. Mel King, and the opportunity that we had for a real discussion on race in this city. And the echoes of that continue to this day. And so for that, we're grateful. And we're grateful, frankly, for Mayor Flynn putting those words to action during his time in office. And so thinking about the kids that the Tynan School serves and the particular special needs that will be served through this sensory room, I can't think of many other more appropriate ways to honor a public servant's legacy in our city. So as I mentioned earlier, we're going to take very quick action. This is a little bit outside of our norm. For the committee, we typically take a meeting in between when we initially hear a report and a recommendation. But we will return to this as a vote shortly, in short order in the meeting here when we move to the action items. So if there's no further questions, I'll thank Principal Gant and we will move back to this item very shortly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you once again. Okay. Moving back into the typical meeting order this evening, we're going to go to action items and we're going to begin with grants for approval. And now you'll notice that the amount of the grants for approval this evening is a little bit larger than normal. Typically, that happens in the summertime when we have large federal grants coming through. And of course, we have one very large, actually two very large federal grants coming in. One that's typical, our food grant at just under $40 million. And second, our CARES Act grant, which is something that we've talked about on a number of occasions in recent meetings. And that's somewhere in the neighborhood of a little over $30 million. So our first action item is grants for approval totaling $76,254,062. I'll open up now to members for questions and discussion. And Vice Chair, it looks like you have your hand up, but I'm not sure if that was from our last discussion or not.
It's from this. Thank you very much, Chair. I just wanted to ask the superintendent about the CARES Act. Was that what we were expecting or was that less? Because I know you had talked about this at a previous school committee meeting. And so I just wanted to make sure if there wasn't more action that we could advocate to get more dollars. If you could talk about that, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Chair. We got a total of around $32 million, but $7 million of it is set aside for private school funding. And the thing that I think you're talking about is the issue that I've been raising about the fact that we are funding private school costs on a total enrollment. Certainly, typically when we get funding from the federal government, it follows the Title I allocation, which is funding for poor kids. And so when you're funding for total enrollment, that takes quite a larger chunk off of the top for our kids. And of course, we're 75% high needs in our district. And so really what it is is additional funding that goes to private schools where they're well off. And so that's quite challenging. And the reason I bring it up even at all is because if the HEROES Act does get passed on the federal side, it's anticipated that that's going to be a lot more funding than the small initial stimulus that's in the CARES Act and will set precedent. So the state has the opportunity not to take the guidance of the Secretary of Education and how to spend these funds and turn those funds away. Many states have chosen to do this. And I think it's something that we should advocate for.
Thank you. And if, yeah, if we can figure out how to let the public know actions they can take, because I think that will be really important that we bring those dollars into our district.
For Boston, that's $7 million off of the top. So instead of $32 million, it's $25 million. And of course, for poor kids, we typically would send that money glad. So that's not the issue here. It's that it's on total enrollment and not based on the historic precedent of funding for poor children.
Any further questions, Vice Chair? Well, thank you for raising that issue. And just to further on that point, you asked a question about how people can help. And I think it starts with reaching out to our delegation. Our delegation is very much aware of this issue, but certainly reminding how keyed in we are with respect to what that money might mean for the district and for other large urban districts across the country is important. I know the House has been very much in favor of putting something into future acts, funding acts that specifically states that the federal government will follow the Title I funding guidelines, which would be in direct contravention to what Secretary DeVos has taken upon herself to issue as guidance here. But we understand that there's some challenges in the Senate to passing any language along those lines. There's also a note that you can ask the state to intervene here as well. It is an option at the state level for individual states to follow DOE guidance or follow what has been typical practice. And in Massachusetts, the state has chosen to follow the guidance. There are other states that have not. And certainly, we could reach out to our state leaders and ask them to follow typical practices. Are there, Ms. Robinson, it looks like you have?
Yeah, this is kind of a follow-up question to that. Do we know the numbers of students that this would be supporting? So that we would say, I don't know how many students, but what percentage of those private school students are low-income? Because you're saying that you wouldn't, you would support supporting them. So it's a way of how do you embarrass the private schools by saying, you know, you're taking these dollars away from low-income students? I mean, the same way when they got people to say that, you know, larger corporations took money for the pandemic for their corporations and gave it back when people began to see where that money was truly going. Could we do something similar? Because we do have a number of very well-off private schools. And those, you know, somebody should know that concretely. I think that's what people really need, a more concrete reason to fight back.
Yeah, so we can definitely pull those numbers because we do have the Title I eligible students. But one example of this would be, we looked at a couple of the schools. And a school like B.C. High, their enrollment is a little over 1,400. When we looked at their Title I eligible student count from this past fiscal year, it was about 31 students. So that's the difference. We've also had to earmark funds for schools if they haven't responded to our intent to apply. So a school like the British International School, we have to get a definitive no from them before we, you know, take away the earmark. But until we get a definitive no, we just have to allocate or earmark those funds in the stimulus application. And at some point, hopefully, we could reallocate it back to Boston. But for now, we just need to earmark it. But I just want to make one slight correction. The $7 million was our high watermark. But after we got the final enrollment numbers from all our schools, we did have some schools that said, no, they're not going to take the money. So the final allocation that we need to earmark right now is a little, about $5.7 million.
Well, hopefully others will follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Other questions or comments? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grant that was presented, excuse me. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Sounds like a second from Ms. Robinson. Is there any discussion or objection? And God bless you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The grants are approved unanimously.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Sullivan. And thank you once again to Ms. Giant for helping out with giving us a little bit more insight into our federal grants. Move on now to our next action item, which is on the report we just heard about, the naming of the Ambassador Raymond Elphlin Sensory Room at the Tynan Elementary School in South Boston. Now, I did see just a moment ago that Ambassador Flynn was able to rejoin us, but it looks like he's not on the broadcast. Oh, there he is. Ambassador Flynn, before we take a vote, would you want to take a moment to say a few words? It looks like we might still be having some difficulties. In any case, we're going to be looking forward to joining you at the sensory room as soon as schools reopen. The committee received superintendent, the superintendent's recommendation a little bit earlier this evening and a presentation, as viewers noted, from Principal Gant from the Tynan School. And as I mentioned earlier, once again, we're deeply appreciative to Principal Gant for having followed the school committee's naming policy, as well as the superintendent circulated and sets out the protocols for that. So at this time, before we move on to a vote, I'll open it up to any further questions or comments from the committee. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the naming of the Sensory Room at the Joseph Tynan Elementary School in honor of Ambassador Raymond Elphlin. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
A great honor to vote in support of recognizing Ambassador Flynn's contribution to the, to the city and our country. And so I vote yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
I heartily and enthusiastically vote yes as well, and congratulate Ambassador Flynn for this honor.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes, I wholeheartedly support this. Thank you so much.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, absolutely, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
I see Dr. Coleman has started a whole new way of voting. I like it. No comment and do it at the vote. How smart.
Was that a yes? No signing statements. I vote yes as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And congratulations once again. Yes, thank you. Let's have a round of applause for Ambassador Flynn and all, once again, all of his great contributions to our city and to our country and our world. Ambassador Flynn, once again, I know we've had some technical difficulties this evening, but we do look forward to joining you once again in person, hopefully sometime soon when we can get our schools reopened this fall. So I hope to see you then and take care. Move on now to our final action item this evening, which is a one-year contract extension for the BPS transportation provider, TransDev. Now, you'll recall that at our last meeting, our secondary superintendent of School Operations and Safety, Mr. Sam DePina, and the Director of Transportation, Ms. Delverne Stanislas, presented the superintendent's recommendation to grant TransDev with a third of five one-year extension options. The one-year extension would run from July 1, 2020, which is next week, through June 20th, excuse me, June 30th, 2021. So at this time, I'll open it up to any final questions or comments from the committee. Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's request to grant TransDev a one-year contract extension covering the period July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Quark. Mr. Tran? Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Well, very good. Thank you once again, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you to Ms. Stanislas and Mr. DePina for their report at the last meeting, very helpful in reminding us of the contract that we've had with TransDev for a number of years and the recent history and use options for the benefit of our, of our district. So we'll move on now to our first and only report this evening, which is Up Academy Boston and their charter renewal application, which with it, a number of updates will be discussed for both the Up Academy Boston as well as Up Academy Dorchester. So at this time, I'd like to invite the following people to turn on their cameras, turn on their mics, and bring forward their report. First, joining us is Veronica Conformey, the CEO of the Up Education Network. Welcome, Ms. Conformey.
Thank you.
Ms. Rashida Lawson, who is the principal of Up Academy Boston. Ms. Lawson, welcome.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mike Bauer, who is the COO of the Up Education Network. Mr. Bauer, yes, there you are. Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Conformey and Ms. Lawson, the floor is yours. Please, please proceed.
Thank you, Chair LaCanto. Good evening. Good evening, Chair LaCanto. Good evening, Vice Chair Davila. Hold down for a minute. There's a couple of things changing on my computer. In Zoom land, I am still finding my way around. So just give me a minute. Okay, great. And all school committee members. My name is Veronica Conformey. I lead Up Education Network. We are honored to come before the school committee to share an update on the work of Up Education Network and specifically Up Academy Boston as we approach the last year of our second charter term and request the committee to renew a third charter term. Up Education Network was founded a decade ago to partner with districts around the state to improve schools. We serve 2,000 students in Boston and at Up Academy Boston, Up Academy Dorchester, and Up Academy Holland. Three years ago, I joined as the CEO, coming from Michigan, specifically Detroit, where I led turnaround efforts, and before that, New York City, where I was the COO and led turnaround efforts for over a decade in New York. Some of you might remember, Up was founded in partnership very much with the city and district here in Boston, and Up Academy Boston was its first school in an effort to improve academic outcomes quickly at a school that needed improvement and had been, had stagnant academic performance for years. In many ways, Up in its first phase achieved its goal. Test scores increased substantially, and you heard from some alumni, specifically in the early years, about the transformation that happened at the school. And I would say had a lot of, made a lot of progress and a lot of friends. However, we did have an environment that I would say was not as warm and as nurturing and as well-rounded for our scholars and a culture that I would argue was challenging, as evidenced by high numbers of suspensions. I talked about this pretty openly when I came to the network and engaged, really, the community, parents, teachers, and staff from our schools in rethinking our strategic plans and in a conversation about what we wanted our schools to become and how we wanted to operate our schools. There were many things that needed to change and from those conversations that came up. And we started to make those changes in many of our schools. But one of the pivotal things that came out was that students in our schools really needed to feel like the schools were their own. We set out a new vision for our schools, and, and this was very much in partnership with our parents. It was about creating exceptional learning environments and partnerships with our families and communities. Students in our schools cultivate their sharp minds, share their kind hearts, and explore their path and potential. In order to execute on that vision, we needed a school leader with a similar vision and values. We wanted to reduce exclusions, suspensions, and we wanted a school that valued student voice in the classroom, that incorporated joyous events and activities, and students and parents that fully owned the vision of the school and made it, and a school that made it feel like their own. During that transition and that change, we did see a dip in performance, specifically in 2018-19. Now, that's not acceptable, and we did not reach our goals on achievement. Historically, Up Academy Boston had been at the top third and in the top number of schools in growth across the state. But change is hard, and it takes time. And we had to retrain teachers on new approaches to make things stick. We found that transformational leader in Rashida. And although our first year of transformation was hard, this past year was much, much better despite the changes and the, and the challenges we faced around COVID. Now we have done that work. We are excited and feel confident and have evidence that this year was a strong year and that a joyous culture has been, been changed in the school with higher achievement. In addition, since I came on board, it was important to me to align the work more closely with BPS. We wanted to share the positive experiences that our staff had working together. My staff in particular have really had a wonderful couple of years of collaboration with BPS staff. I personally enjoyed working with Dr. Casselius and look forward to working with her in the future. And our teams have formed a strong working relationship. This was also a big priority for me as I came on board. I want to specifically call out, there are so many staff that we could call out, but I want to specifically call out Kathy Lazat, Mark Racine, Sam DePina, Nate Cooter, Grace Way, and most recently Becky Schuster from the Office of Equity, who has already met with our Chief of Equity and Learning from our organization, Tisha Marquette, to forge a stronger partnership. That work has led to much more aligned policies and us adapting BPS's civil rights policy as well as the code of conduct. We have spent a lot of hours and a lot of meetings in this collaboration, and it's bare fruit. As a school and network, we are proud of the work we have done, and we are just scratching the surface on what this partnership could become and excited about moving forward on our collaboration. Let me now turn it over to our principal of Up Academy Boston in South Boston, Rashida Lawson, to talk about the great work she's done.
Thank you, Veronica. Good afternoon, or good evening, rather. My name is Rashida Lawson, and I'm the principal of UAB, as we affectionately call it. In the fall, I'll be entering my third year, and I'd like to spend some time this evening in order to talk with you a bit about the work that our team at the school has done. We have the privilege of being able to identify as the founding school in the Up Education Network. We're located in South Boston and serve about 400 students in grades six through eight. Our students come from neighborhoods across the city, with some of them living as close as across the street and others of them traveling as far as Matapan. With their families, students are making an active decision to choose UAB, traversing the city. And so we take seriously the responsibility of ensuring their experience is well worth the journey. We're proud to serve an amazingly diverse group of students. As you can see here on the screen, over 82% of our students are high needs, which is well above the district average. I'd like to, if I can, just paint a little bit picture for you about what school is like at UAB and talk with you about these two images. At the top here, you see Pacina and Ashanti, who are rising seventh graders in enrichment block. They're learning to play the ukulele from Mr. Cassidy, who is our music teacher. And at the bottom is perhaps one of the proudest moments for me this year, as we embark on one of our first ever honor roll assemblies. It's another Ashanti, not to be confused with the one in the top picture, who was promoted from our school this year and is on her way to high school in the fall. She and her mom being with pride as they celebrate her achievements and the achievements of about 100 of her classmates for academic excellence across the fall semester. We can go on to the next slide. One of the things that we really value and emphasize at UAB is rigorous academics. We know that a rigorous academic experience for our kids in key content areas is essential to their success, both in our school and beyond it. While many middle schools that serve student populations like ours might sacrifice time in science or history for exclusive instruction of literacy and math, for instance, we don't make that sacrifice at UAB and instead aim to immerse our students in core subject areas that are rich and rewarding and put them on the path to careers in the field of STEM or civics or whatever it is that they choose. These are careers that are often reserved for their more affluent peers. Picture here, you'll see Natalia. She's a student who was recently promoted from UAB and is on her way to EMK in the fall. Natalia is just one of our many students who has not only been immersed in our academic rigor, who has not only developed very strong and rich relationships with her teachers, particularly in her eighth grade year, she's also taken advantage of our robust sports programming, as she was a member of our girls' basketball team and the coed track and field team. I want to paint another picture for you of what a seventh-grade ELA classroom is like at UAB. And I think about Haley Grossman, who teaches seventh-grade English. And I think about what it's like to walk into her room, and you'll notice quite a few things. The first thing that you'll notice is that Ray Bradbury's Fahrenheit 451 is on students' desks. It is the very first text that they are introduced to in their seventh-grade year. You'll walk around the classroom, and you'll look at their texts, and you'll notice that students are feverishly scribbling in annotations. And you'll look at their notebooks and see that they aren't just regurgitating the text, but they're actually making meaning, true meaning, of what the text is saying. And they're doing all of this in preparation for a class discussion. And if you have enough time, and if you're lucky enough and you stick around, you'll get to see the students engage in a no-hands discussion. You'll see these seventh-grade students reading this extraordinarily rigorous text, and they listen to each other. They contest one another's ideas. They agree and disagree until they reach a deeper understanding. That's just one instance of what happens in a UAB classroom. You're pushed toward academic excellence. Students and teachers alike highlight relationships as a key component of what makes UAB a special place. And I'm proud to work in a school that prioritizes the growth and development of the entire student. There are a few critical ingredients that permit us to cultivate an environment that fosters those close-knit relationships, and I'd like to highlight three of them. The first is our cohort model. It allows close connections between students and teachers, those connections that students like Natalia value so much. It means that teachers have fewer overall students in their portfolio, which means that students get increased individualized attention and that families get more frequent and more meaningful collaboration with the school, as you heard from some of our community members at the public discussion. The way teams are structured also provides embedded opportunities for collaboration so teachers can regularly work with content partners, design and internalize lessons, and look at student work to determine, we teaching best practices? And they do this work together. They're not on an island. The second thing I'd like to highlight is our extended school day. At UAB, our doors open at 7:15, and students are dismissed at 3:00 p.m., with some of them staying until 3:30 for teacher office hours or homework club or just to hang out. More time on task means more learning can happen. It means we can honor the necessary time for core instruction and provide our students with critical enrichment experiences and opportunities to connect with their peers socially. While each of our students take ELA, math, science, and history across their time at UAB, they also engage in PE, art, music, and high school choice. The final thing I like to highlight about our model is this: built-in supports for all students. In school year 1920, we made a commitment in line with the district-wide effort to put more counselors in schools for student mental health supports, to make more robust our student support team. That meant that we added a second social worker. We hired a new school psychologist. We hired- We hired various staff in varying positions with counseling backgrounds. And we continued our relationship with Home for Little Wanderers, advocating for a second full-time counselor. In addition to this, we continue to bolster the support that students need for their academic skills through tutoring, intervention block, office hours, and homework club. That way, we can make sure that there is a regular rhythm for adult support for all students across the school day. A critical part of our community is not just found in the classroom. It spills over to every opportunity we make available to students. And let's be real, the things that students remember most often don't take place inside of the classroom. We talked about our rigorous course load and our wide-ranging sports programming. I want to talk a bit about Friday afternoons at UAB. The hallways buzz with students heading to their enrichment. It could be coding, retro video gaming, hip-hop club, or anime. We had two of those, by the way, because it was so popular. When we say we want our students to explore their path of potential, we mean it. And each year, we get better at this. There are opportunities to grow a leadership voice, such as in our Student Leadership Council. There are events to showcase student talent and identity through talent shows, spirit days, and events that celebrate Black and Latinx heritage and culture. And finally, we encourage students to use opportunities outside of the classroom to continue to learn in less conventional ways, including overnight trips to the Museum of Science, a trip to New York City for our eighth grade students, trips to local colleges to sit in on live classes, tour the dorms, and hear from current students about their own experiences. Again, the programming is so important. And it's important to us because our North Star at UAB is getting positive outcomes for students. I'd like to revisit our organizational vision that Veronica touched on at the top of her introduction. On our quest to cultivate sharp minds, when the doors to Up Academy opened in the fall of 2011, we knew it was critical to improve academic outcomes for students immediately. And we did that, earning extraordinary results during the first charter term, ranked the number one middle school in the state for four years in growth on MCAS. In the second charter term, academic achievement remains critical. And we knew that we needed to hold ourselves accountable for coupling academic success with an eye toward equity and undoing many of the practices that were punitive, almost exclusively reserved for students with black or brown skin. Students like the incredible ones who attend UAB. Even as we worked tirelessly to shift our original practices, and it was tough, change can be hard, we still saw some bright spots. For instance, proficiency levels on MCAS are three times better since Up has been operating the school. And in 2019 in particular, UAB was in the top third of growth on the MCAS in Boston. On our quest for students to share their kind hearts, in this charter term, we have unapologetically placed an emphasis on decreasing exclusions. And in school years 18 and 19, UAB saw its lowest exclusion rate since the school's inception. We reduced exclusions by 90% over the last five years. We leverage SEO practices through things like staff circles or various SEO curriculum. We recently appointed an SEO lead on staff to help champion this work and train our staff across our school. And more clearly, we transformed our approach to culture. For us, that meant doing some really hard and really honest work. It meant redoing our in-class school-wide behavior management system to reduce out-of-class exclusions. It meant beginning to rethink the hiring and retention of our staff of color. I'm proud to say that 50% of our newest hires this year are people of color. I'm proud to say that over 50% of our leadership team identifies as people of color. And more and more, the adults in our school are able to reflect the students who call UAB home. Finally, with support from our network, the school engaged with experts at BPS and DESI in order to best discern how to implement the Code of Conduct. Finally, on our quest to have students explore their path of potential, middle school is an opportunity for students to gain the critical skills to be successful in high school, college, and beyond. We always say that our work isn't done once students walk across that stage at Faneuil Hall, that the real mark of our success is what happens once students leave our doors. And we take that role seriously. We recognize that navigating the school choice process is challenging to families. Therefore, we have a dedicated high school choice counselor who helps students with the high school application process so that so that they can attend the school, which is the best fit for them, including exam schools. Finally, we really honor the challenge to shape the whole student, which is why rigor and relationships are critical for us at UAB. So even with our historical and present success, we recognize that there is so much room for improvement at UAB. 2018 was my first year as principal. And with network support, I led an intentional shift from the no-excuses discipline practices that, again, are often reserved for students who look like ours, Black and Brown. And admittedly, it was tough. And we saw that reflected in our achievement results last year. And with COVID-19, we've all been disappointed by the missed opportunity for this year's MCAS. That said, we remain steadfast in our obligation to our students to ensure that our practices are equitable and prepare them for life beyond UAB. And there are a few bright spots worth noting. In math in 1819, UAB was among the top third of BPS schools in math growth, doubling the proficiency rate from the previous school year in seventh grade math. Students' subgroups, Black, Latinx, Ls, students with disabilities, and economically disadvantaged students all outperformed their respective district averages in growth in 1819. And all of those subgroups, except students with disability, outperformed their district averages on proficiency as well. In ELA, we saw a dip in our expectations, but our school was stronger than 1/3 of BPS schools in ELA. Since drawing the line in the sand in 1819 about what was and what was not acceptable in the ways we treat and discipline our students, we've done the following. We've launched ELA as a priority across the network and within UAB, participating in a highly competitive program hosted by Achievement First. That's why our seventh grade students read Fahrenheit 451 as their first text. We changed our coaching practices and support and expectations for teachers and staff around intellectual prep, observation and feedback, and curriculum expertise. Like I said, I'm disappointed that we don't have the MCAS this year, but we had indicators of moving in a positive direction. For instance, on the NWEA map testing, something we began in school year 1819 and will continue. It is a key benchmark assessment we use to gauge student learning, and our results were notably stronger in our winter assessment this year versus last in both ELA and math. It's worth noting, too, that the map indicates positive movement of our lowest 25% of performers, arguably our most vulnerable population. There's one more data point I'd like to share about this school year in particular. In 2020, our access results indicate that our ESL students were on track to make great progress, with 24 students flipped this year, indicating a notable increase in language proficiency and acquisition across the building. That's a huge testament to the work of our ESL coordinator and the teacher that she supports. At Up, we pride ourselves on facing the brutal facts. You heard some of them today. We celebrate the bright spots, and we try to replicate our success. And in doing this, it means that we need to consider the areas of improvement. As we look to the future, we are doubling down on our network-wide vision on cultivating sharp minds. What's on my mind particularly is the way in which COVID has forced every educator to reckon with the unknown. You heard from our Chair of the School Committee earlier, Mr. Amar Kumar, on the work we have done since school closings have started. And we look forward to replicating as close as possible the in-person experience in the virtual realm through increased collaboration and teacher training. Again, sharing kind hearts. We made some intentional, unapologetic shifts in last school year toward restorative practices. Our students deserve fair and equitable discipline practices. They deserve not to be policed because of the color of their skin. They deserve the room to make mistakes and learn from them in order to help shape their behavior. And on explore path and potential, you've heard from some of our extraordinary alumni tonight. We aim to multiply UAB's impact so that each of our students can walk the paths of Bilal Lafta and Jarrell White, if they so choose. With that, tonight, we're asking for your vote of support to approve our charter renewal for a third term. We are grateful to the BTU and the UAB Board of Trustees for their partnership and approval of our application. I'm so fortunate for the opportunity to be able to talk with you tonight. Thank you for your time and your consideration. And with that, I'll pass it back over to Ms. Veronica Conformey, our CEO.
Thanks, Rashida, for sharing a really authentic piece of how how Boston operates and what it feels like to be in the school. As part of our Charter with the State for both Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester, we are required to update any amendments to our charter. And today, we're asking for approval on four amendments. Our enrollment policy that outlines our application process and has been updated to include new guidance from DESI. It has language on backfilling eighth-grade seats, requirements for lottery admissions, response deadlines, and residency requirements. You also have our MOU, which outlines the relationship between BPS and Up that includes that we've adopted the civil rights policy by BPS and aligned on the Code of Conduct with BPS. Our expulsion policy, which is also required by DESI. And let me share that although we have an expulsion policy, no student has been expelled from Up Academy Boston this past year. And finally, our management contract, which outlines the services provided by Up Education Network provided to Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester. No significant changes were made to the contract. Finally, most of the extensive work with BPS this year has been on aligning our Code of Conduct. As a result, we have shifted a number of things within our code, specifically grade levels. We've introduced an appeals and hearing criteria, and we have enhanced notifications to families. We are proud of the work we have done and the position and position our schools to be even stronger by reducing exclusions and suspensions and creating other approaches to ensure that students' needs are addressed. Tonight, we ask you for the approval of the third renewal of UAB and these policies that have been presented to you as required by DESI for both Up Academy Boston and Up Academy Dorchester. Thank you for your time, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Thanks once again, Ms. Conformey and Ms. Lawson and Mr. Bauer. I'm going to open up the floor now to members for questions and discussion. If you want to virtually raise your hand using the Zoom function, I can get a roster going of who would like to speak. Or you can just get my attention, and we can get things started off. All right, see the vice chairs ready to speak. Looks like Mr. O'Neill. Why don't we start with you, Mr. O'Neill?
Lucky me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentations today. And the benefit of being on the committee for a few years, as I remember the presentation five years ago before you joined, Ms. Conformey, I believe, but the district has invited in Up Academy and worked collaboratively to have you work with some of our schools and did so at our request with some schools we were really challenged with. And then at renewal time, we did have some real concerns. And at that, the last time, the concerns were much more around the Code of Conduct, and Up had their certain viewpoint of, you know, we do things our way, so to speak. So I'm really glad to hear, in particular, Principal Lawson, how you addressed the changes that have happened. They're steps in the right direction. I'm not sure yet if we're all the way there. And so, Ms. Conformey, how you said in particular what has happened in the last year and what you anticipate. I mean, when I look at the chronic absentee numbers, you did mention that there have been no expulsions in the past year. But I think you didn't mention about suspensions, though, Principal Lawson. You did have it. I think you had about 10% suspensions this year. It's a 60% reduction, but it is still concerning. And you did mention some achievement items that you were happy with. I'm interested, from the district's perspective, if they were looking at the achievement of the school against a scale of all of our schools, how the district would feel that that the these schools in particular achieved, so to speak. There were some highlights, but there obviously, we only looked at highlights, but there, I'm sure, are some concerns on achievement as well. I did like to see the MAP data that you pointed out where you thought, you know, some potential indicators of where you were going on MCAS, because we have been using MAP more often. And it'd be interesting to see from previous years if the indicator is actually borne out with higher performance on MCAS. But Superintendent, do you mind if I ask you how, you know, if the district looked at the achievement on Up Academy, how it would compare to some of our other schools?
Yeah, so first, Ms. Conformey, thank you for your presentation, as well as Principal Lawson and the work that you're doing over at Up Academy. We had our superintendents working with their data and really trying to work through their achievement data. And, you know, their achievement data is very similar to that of our lowest performing schools, Up Academy Falls in the ninth percentile of schools. So it would fall with similar performance to our transformation schools. I have talked with Ms. Conformey about the data as well as looking at the suspension data and the attendance data, because you want to look at all factors when it comes to student achievement. So, you know, that's concerning, obviously, and we have invited them to participate in the transformation. I do also enjoy working with Ms. Conformey, and I also know that Ms. Lawson just got there and has been doing good work to try to really reform some of these things, as she pointed out in her presentation. So, you know, my recommendations would be to approve, but with conditions around metrics for improved achievement, improved attendance, and and then on the behavior side, as well as they begin to work with good culture. We are happy to continue to partner with them, and I appreciate that Ms. Conformey has really agreed to the Code of Conduct as well as following our Code of Conduct, as well as following our equity circulators and working with our Equity Office, which was really important part of us in the approval process. So that's where we're at with our with our recommendation.
Thank you, Superintendent. That's helpful to hear. And I agree, Ms. Conformey, you know, so many of these things were from before you joined, and so I recognize how much has changed. And quite frankly, this is music to my ears, at least, where I hear you talking about the Code of Conduct and aligning, as well as with some of the state requirements. I fully understand that. But I'd love to see you go further, right? I'd love to see that suspension rate lower, the achievement rates higher.
So would we.
I know you would. I know you would. But I have to lay it out, right? School committee members are asked for our opinion on it. And we have to say what our concerns are when we're considering a vote. The other thing, as I do note, and this is similar conversation that we had with Green Academy recently, that we are doing some grade configuration changes in BPS overall. And so we are focused much more now on getting rid of 23 different grade configurations and really trying to move to a model where we're K to 6, 7, and 12, and K to 8, 9 to 12, and having more certainty for parents. And so we did ask Green Academy to be flexible, because they are a 6 through 12 model. We asked them to be flexible in how they approach their grade configuration, as we strive for more consistency across the district on that. And I'm not sure how Up Academy feels about that, because you have a, what, you have a 6 through 8, you have a K through 5, and you have a K through 8.
Yeah, that's that's a, thank you for your question on that. I think as long as we engage family and critical stakeholders in the conversation, we are very open, and I've shared this with Dr. Casellas in the past. We are very open to coming in alignment with some of the same grade systems that BPS has. We very much have feeder patterns from a variety of BPS schools, including Holland, which is one of our own, but we are open, very open to that conversation. But, you know, it takes time and engagement and really listening to parents and students and faculty around around there also voice in this.
Well, I understand that completely. Matter of fact, that is what we have been doing in a multi-year process at BPS overall, and listening to families and teachers. and listening to families and teachers and community folks. And that is what has been driving the district and this committee to move towards more of uniformity, because that's exactly what we have been hearing from parents and teachers and students, and also looking at the results of our middle schools. So at this point, I just want to bring it up to see your interest in having that conversation and the understanding, because that would be important as well.
Yeah.
I'll defer back to the chair now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. We'll go next to Dr. Rivera.
Hi. So, thank you so much again, especially Principal Lawson, for your wonderful presentation. It really gave a sense of, like, you know, the everyday and that sometimes these metrics don't necessarily tell you what are the really good things that are happening, right, in a school and about the school culture. I am a new member, so I, you know, I'm learning about this. I didn't know where you were. So I do, you know, will express some of the same, you know, concerns that Mr. O'Neill expressed as well. And I do have a question, too. But first, the concerns, again, I will, you know, concerned about English learners and their outcomes, and you talked a little bit about what the coordinator is doing. Clearly, the suspension rates still are substantially higher than the district average. So, you know, that's still a major concern. Also, curious about, you know, that there are declining enrollments. And so, I'm wondering if, if you know, so I have like two questions, like if you know where those, the, you know, the children that are leaving the school, if they're, they're going back to, to say, another BPS school? I don't know if there's any kind of tracking that you're doing to try to find out what is the explanation for the law, the declining enrollments? And then I have a second question.
Yeah, let me, let me frame one thing, and then Rashida, I'll hand it over to you. You know, I think much to remember O'Neill's point about changing reconfiguration and this sort of conversation that has been happening in Boston, I think that has already started to have some effect in terms of enrollment, specifically sixth grade enrollment for us. And we're starting to see some of that play out in the numbers. But I would also say, we lose a number of kids in the seventh grade, and I think Rashida referred to them. We encourage kids to apply to the exam schools. We prepare them for that. And they are leaving in the seventh grade in a very proactive way. I think Rashida can verify some of the numbers on that. And some of the other schools that start in the seventh grade. We believe that parents should choose the best possible option, and if that gives them the continuity from the seven through 12 for kids, then, then we are, we do see that play out in the numbers. Rashida, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would, I would support that. I know that our sixth grade staff, we have a cohort model, and so we have teacher leaders. We call them cohort leaders. They liaise on a regular basis, sometimes daily, but certainly weekly with families who often bring their students to UP in the sixth grade as kind of this holding space, knowing that we will fully prepare them for the ISCE and ultimately prepare them for the rigors of an exam school. So I would definitely support that piece. I think to your questions, and thank you so much, Dr. Rivera, for your comments earlier, to your concerns around our English language learners. I think transparently, we saw some of our strongest performance in this school year. And like Mr. O'Neill stated, like, we still have a ways to go. One of the things we really say at our schools is that, like, our work is never done. We can always be better. We're always looking for those gaps. And for us, it means how are we multiplying some of the successes that we did see, for instance, with our coordinator across our school? Each spring, we sit down with our staff and we undergo a yearly strategic planning process. And we have two strategic priorities this school year. The first of them is academic excellence. And there's a bunch of things that go under that umbrella. We specifically called out interventions for our English language learners and students with disabilities, because admittedly, it hasn't been something that has been a strong suit, at least in my tenure at the school. And what that means for us is how are we making sure that we have a way to progress monitor and one catch the students who need those additional supports? What programs or training are we giving teachers? And what access are we giving them to certain materials in order to support students' learning? So this year, we have, like, Purchase Lexia, for instance, for our students. We intend on training teachers for that. We created a working group of about 10 staff members. This was led by teachers at the school who worked in order to discern the myriad ways in which we could support students. And so for us, it just means recognizing what the gap is. For us, we realize that that is our students with disabilities and English language learners. And then also providing opportunities for teachers to have a voice, purchase whatever programming we need and what the budget can handle, and then support teachers in that training and monitor our progress there. Finally, your piece about discipline, this has been a really tough, a tough piece for us, and it's something that I felt quite passionately about. And so, while, while I look at that number and I see that 10% is, you know, amongst the lowest that we've been since the school's inception, for me, and I would agree, it's still far too high. It still is an indicator that we still have work to do. For us, that realization came honestly at the end of last school year, in the spring of 19. We sat down with our returning staff and wanted to join us. There were about 40 people in the room. And we looked at our existing, we call it the behavior management system or culture management system, because we understood that class referrals were often a fast track to being out of school suspended. And my staff would know that, like I say all the time, like, students who are not in class cannot learn. And so, while I am proud of our progress, I still fully recognize that as a school leader, it is absolutely my responsibility to do everything in my power to further reduce that. And in the past two years, we've been on the track of doing that. I'm excited to see what happens at the end of last school year through our very concerted and strategic efforts to continue to support all students. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. I, again, I don't know much about UP. I was curious, are the teachers part of the union, the teachers, the Boston teachers?
Yes. Yes, we are part of BPS and get a lot of services and supports, busing system, everything else. And the teachers are part of the BTU.
And one last thing, could you say a little bit about how you're teaching your staff, you're teaching and your staff about its diversity compared to the rest of the school district? I didn't see any slide about that.
Yeah, I don't know what the rest of the school districts are, but we are approaching 50% staff of color at UAB.
Okay, well, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. We'll go next, Mr. Ms. Robinson. You have a question.
Yes, thank you very much for your report. I had a question. It's interesting when you say that you have 40 kids leaving your school, going to the exam school. So the question was, are these kids going from sixth grade to seventh grade, or eighth to ninth, or a combination?
Yeah, I'm happy to jump in. There's a combination of both. We certainly encourage our eighth grade students through the high school choice process and the counseling that they receive to go to the schools that are the best fit for them. And fortunately, because of the relationships they have with their teachers and the ways in which we prepare them, for a good chunk of our eighth grade students, that is exam schools. And so, and it varies from year to year, but the vast majority of those students, those 40 kids who we send each year to exam schools are in fact eighth grade students who would leave us anyway, because they've got to go to high school. And then there is a good chunk of students who we spoke about earlier, who come to UAB again, like, as that holding place, get ready to take the ISCE, get ready for the next step, and then leave us in order to go through those seven, 12 exam schools.
Which, do you have any percentages of which schools they end up in?
That I do not know. I'm certain that we can get it for you.
Okay. My other question was, you know, as I was looking at your curriculum, do you offer any foreign language in the, particularly for the sixth to eighth grade cohort? Because that you didn't talk a little, any about, about that in any of the slides.
Yeah, at UAB, not yet. We say that often, in which we think about, like, what are the, some of the things that we have to prioritize? And so, there was a time, for instance, where we didn't offer Core Four a year round to each of our students across grade levels. You heard me talk a bit about that, and so we prioritize that. There was a time where students took physical education classes just once a week, where school in the middle of the city, we have a concrete parking lot, there isn't an opportunity for students to get recreational activities in. And so, we increased the frequency with which our students take phys ed, because that is important. Children need to move. And many students also have an opportunity to do that through recess or something like that. And so, I think in the short term, in terms of offering foreign like, foreign language at UAB, that's not something that is yet on the horizon. When we think about the long-term goal, we want to be able to give our students a rich course offering, one that would rival, you know, any school district. And so, that's certainly something that's on the radar. So the short answer to that is not yet.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. We'll go to Vice Chair, excuse me, Vice Chair Oliver Davila.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Principal Lawson, Mr. Bauer, and Ms. Conformey. I know a lot about all of you have great reputations. And I was not part of the previous school committee that was working with you, but thank you for all the work that you've done. And I agree with Dr. Rivera in terms of really bringing to light in your presentation a sense of what happens during the school day, because, you know, it's more than just the metrics. However, the metrics are important. So I do agree with many of the comments that were made in terms of the code of conduct. I really, I'm happy to hear that there's more alignment, because I know in the last conversation that we had, that was a huge concern that I had. And I am glad to see the suspension rates decrease. However, I do think they're high. And I wonder, since I hear from you and I've heard from Ms. Conformey, that you both think it's really high. And so I wonder, if the leadership thinks that it's really high, what is the disconnect with, you know, the staff that it's still high? And kind of, you know, if you can talk about that, and then what is, what is like the plan moving forward to make sure that that number really goes down? I saw that, I think you said, you don't do suspensions like K one and two, K one to two. But I can't imagine what a third grader would do to be suspended. But if you could talk a little bit about that, because that, again, it is, it is a high number.
Yeah. A lot of what we've been doing across the board, and this is this in terms of all of the schools, but Rashida can talk more specifically about Boston, has been bringing in restorative practices. The reason that that takes time, there was, you know, I don't, I'm not, like, we're not going to mince words. This was a very, it was a culture of no excuses in this school. And it is not, as Rashida said, very specifically, you know, that approach for Black and Brown students has not had great results nationally. We know that. At the same time, you got to get staff prepared. You've got to train them. You've got to provide professional development. You've got to bring in outside resources. You've got to think about how many other social workers and counselors you're going to have. Like, all of that is a process of change. That's the change that we initiated, and that's the change that we've been investing in over the last couple of years. But the minds, the mindset and the actions and the practices have to change, and they have to change to something that replaces it, that's more holistic, that is more restorative. But that takes time to train people, unless you're going to lose everybody on the bus. And we can't afford to lose all teachers. So it, you know, it is, it's that balance. And that's, and that's what we've been doing over the last couple of years, and that's why we're very, really confident that those numbers will continue to drop as people become more proficient and become more embracing of the practices and really deeply understanding it. Rashida, would you add anything?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would support that. Like, as I reflected a ton on last year, which actually was my first year in a principalship, like, there was so much around staff support and just like training and getting on the same page. But again, training, that was going to be such a necessary part of undoing some of what our school has been founded on. And we met some success with that this year, and so I'm proud of that. And it is in part what drives my confidence about the ability to continue to see our suspension rate go down. But to Veronica's point, like, it is tough to change mindsets overnight. What I have learned shifts mindsets is training, folks feeling a sense of success, that success beginning to multiply. And then you start to see folks rowing in the same direction. And, and so, we saw that, not to the extent to which I had hoped or which I would like to see, but I'm confident that we will continue that trend.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's, shifting mindset is a big deal. And I, I'm sure you all are doing your work to kind of monitor staff who are, you know, putting students in suspension, who are doing it at high rates. So you don't have to answer that, but I assume that you're doing that. And I did also have concerns about the yield outcomes, and thank you for answering previous question. I, I'm not sure, the diversity sounds great, that it's 50%. I don't know what the breakdown is, if that is like, are you talking about your entire staff, so like custodial staff to leadership? Or you're talking about just teachers in general, that's 50% diverse?
So, so are, the way we count is the school staff. The custodial staff is not part of the schools, what you would call the school budget, if you will. That's still part of, very much part of BPS's budget, and that's part of the work that they support that. So when we, we're talking, we're talking about school-facing staff, student-facing staff, from paras to, you know, other support teams and teachers.
And the, and just teachers, just, I'm just curious about the teacher. Do you know what's the diversity rate of just your teachers, not support staff or paras?
Yeah, I can add, I can chime in there. So we have a staff of just over 50 folks. Around 23 of those folks of 50 are folks of color. And so, that transition came honestly at the start of this school year, as we did a significant amount of hiring in the fall. Our leadership team has six people on it, six permanent members. Three of those six members are staff of color. And so, that is precisely 50% of our LT, when we think about that. And then in terms of new hires, thankfully, we've been able to retain a good chunk of staff this school year. So in the four people that we've hired, two of those people also identify as staff of color. So again, of 50% identification. And that is, that's critical to me. Our students need to be able to walk into our school and see folks that reflect back at them. When I, you know, when you guys heard our sixth grade student, Ama Reese, speak about some of her, you know, favorite teachers, the adults who have been the most impactful, it wasn't a coincidence. I don't think that she named many of our staff of color that is really critical in a school that looks like ours. So I'm proud of that work that we've done.
That's great. I commend you on that. That's, that's very, very good. And I, you don't have to answer this, I'm just going to put this out, I think, related to some of the comments you heard before. That's a huge investment that you are making to then be working with students so diligently to get them into exam schools. It just seems like a lot of effort. And I just wonder if you want to think about really, you know, moving down towards, like, expanding, but having, you know, not up to the eighth grade piece, just, you know, it just seems like that's a, that's a lot of work for you guys to then be shifting students to, you know, that's just my own personal opinion, just put that out there. And then my last question is more towards like the superintendent. And I'm just wondering, so what I heard in the presentation leads me to believe that there's really strong rigor in this school. And so possibly, I'm wondering if, if, when we're looking at the metrics, if that has something to do with that, just based on some of the things that were talked about in the presentation? And if you had a chance to look at that, and if you could talk a little bit about, I don't know if you have or haven't, or if staff have gone in to kind of look at, at the rigor?
Um, are you?
I was talking to the superintendent, just, if, I don't, I don't know if BPS does that or not, but I was just curious, because your presentation, you know, it had a lot of great things in it, when you talk about, you know, college and career level stuff and some of the things that you, the examples that you gave, to me, like, speak to rigor. And so I just wondered if, you know, the rigor is, is high and, and the reality is, like, many of our students who don't have the same opportunities, you know, start in a different place. And so, that's a reality. And so I just And so I just wondered if that also had to do with some of the metrics that, you know, aren't there yet? Um, but you also have this really, you know, strong rigor. So I was just curious if that might be the case? And if, maybe you don't do that, Superintendent, maybe you don't go in and, and do that.
Yeah, Vice Chair, they're a charter school, so we typically don't get involved in their autonomies. Um, however, we do offer support and um, work with them uh, when, when it's asked for. So Veronica could probably be able to talk more about what the past relationship has been. I know that Grace Y was working with the team um, this year. So maybe, I don't know if you want to speak to it, and I don't think Grace is in the room to speak to what she's been able to do, but maybe Ms. Lawson knows more of what.
Ms. Conformey, you can answer.
Yeah, yeah, um, uh, uh, we have been working more collaboratively. Um, uh, Dr. Casselius has been in this, has visited the school. Um, she's visited all our schools and um, and it is, you know, it is rigorous. I would say, um, I would say one of the pieces of transformation that has happened is that I do think um, that the mode of instruction was very didactic before. It was teacher speaks, students write, et cetera. We have shifted our, our model, our academic model to much more what we call student-centered, student voice. So we have kids who are um, talking and debating and we expect much more kid talk time than student-teacher talk time. Um, that's been a big shift and a big priority for our network this year. Um, and so you'll see a lot of the changes and, and Rashida talked about it because it's, it, you know, it's been very transformative for students and for, and for teachers. Um, so in addition to like training on the other stuff that we talked about. Um, so uh, but you know, like, I invite you to come see it. Like, it, it is so important um, to come see it. Um, uh, the councilwoman who uh, who's testified in our support, you know, visited it. It spends so much time in our classrooms. She's a former teacher and uh, you know, uh, got a chance to see it. So I invite all the committee members to, to come see.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Um, so thank you once again to all the representatives from the UP network with their presentations tonight. Um, I wanted to start off, I, I appreciated Ms. Conformey, your um, thanks for a number of the folks in the district that you've been working with on uh, this charter update um, and renewal over the last several months. And um, I know a number of those folks who've been particularly uh, engaged with you and Mr. Bauer on the code of conduct. And so I did want to call that out specifically and um, uh, include a note of thanks for the work that you did uh, to bring uh, the code of conduct at the UP network in line with uh, the BPS code of conduct. As you know, this is something that's been very um, important to this committee that we have uh, a standard approach to discipline across our district, regardless of the, the type of school you're in. And uh, we're very proud of the code of conduct that we've worked on with our uh, code of conduct advisory committee, our Boston Student Advisory Council, um, and a number of other stakeholders that have pushed us on our thinking about discipline, particularly in the lower grades uh, over the years. So um, I wanted to call that out. Um, I also wanted to particularly call out the good work on um, closing gaps on absenteeism that um, your data bore out as well as the work that you've done um, with your mass scores. And also being honest to um, note where you've fallen short and uh, the, the work that needs to be done in places like ELA. Um, I did want to ask a question um, for, and this is directed to the superintendent. Um, you've recommended a renewal uh, with conditions. And I wanted to ask you to talk a little bit about um, what that looks like because I don't know that we've seen that um, context before and what conditions might we expect? I believe that's a, a term that um, is a, it, it's a term of art for DESI. Um, so I, I, I believe that specific term is not something that we would take action on. We would simply um, approve the recommendation that the charter be renewed. But I want to understand some of the contours of how that might affect this school because it does, these are our students, these are our teachers and, and this school remains within our system.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think um, Ms. Lazat could probably answer that question better than I, given she knows the law. But I do believe that it means that we're making a recommendation to the commissioner and then the commissioner would work on what those conditions would be with the charter, uh, what those metrics might be. And they're usually around where we see that growth is necessary.
Okay, and so.
They most recently did that with um, City on Hill. I think it was charter recently, the, the commissioner made a, a ruling of um, putting conditions and not, not, not approving it.
I think City on Hill might have been in a different um, category. And I think there's a number of categories here, but um, and it's, it's in a, it, I, I don't want to paint with a broad here because we do see a number of areas where um, this school is specifically improving. And we know a number of areas based on the presentation that uh, the schools have brought forward tonight where um, that we all acknowledge that the schools need to continue to improve. And I think is, what's important here is that we're hearing uh, strategies to do that. So I think um, I just wanted to understand, um, you know, aside from anything that we might have heard in the presentation tonight, is there anything else specific that goes along with what um, those conditions might be? Or what might be the context for any further conditions? And it sounds like Ms. Conformey might have some additional input based on her experience with the board.
Yeah, I, I mean, um, you know, I, I think that we can work very closely with Dr. Casselius to also align in looking at the metrics that she is gonna put forth to all, all BPS schools and potentially all Horace Manns, uh, depending on where they are. And we'd be happy to engage in what that conversation looks like and align to that as well as part of like what we strive for as, as another uh, part of the BPS community. If that, if that is, that's very great.
I, I think also, you know, Boston Green Academy recently came um, and presented as well and they had a review done. And I think that DESI does that review as well, right?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
And within that, there are certain categories within the review that you have to show. And so it would be within that review, I believe, that then they would determine what uh, would be the corrective action or improvement model that they would want to use.
Yes, that's correct.
And I do think also that the commissioner could just make a call to, just to prove it. I think it is his decision. This is just a recommendation.
Right. Okay, uh, well, that's helpful context. Um, well, as I said, I think, you know, there's a lot of good uh, in this presentation. It's helpful to hear um, that, you know, UP is being proactive here and addressing and, and um, uh, in, with a real focus um, head on, uh, some of the real issues that are um, facing the school. Which, you know, as the presentation um, points out, are the issues that are facing a number of our schools. And um, I think it's great that um, you've been able to back up the numbers um, uh, particularly around uh, teacher hiring, teacher diversity um, with uh, the action that you've been able to take in a pretty short order. Uh, that's um, something that we've been trying to do for a number of years in the district. And um, you know, it's tough to get out there and recruit uh, candidates that uh, that look like our students. And um, so we, you know, we applaud you for going out and making that a, a goal and, and making it a reality, more importantly. So I don't have any further questions right now. I do want to look around just to make sure we didn't miss anyone. Um, but we, we will certainly look forward to, after a long break here of a month, taking action in our next meeting in, in July.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you all for, for your, your voice and input. And uh, and every, we take every opportunity as a learning opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thanks again. And um, as I mentioned, uh, we will take action on this at our next meeting, which is July 22nd. All right, uh, we will move on now to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, we have no speakers.
Okay, um, any new business from the committee?
May I just raise one point? Um, it was so, it was so delightful to hear from Mr. Kincaid earlier tonight. And I always hesitate to think about, you know, one student in particular when we have 56,000 students in our care. But the way that we've heard from Willie Kincaid over the years and as we watched his growth from his middle school years through high school and uh, you know, a young man who suffers with disabilities, um, but was always valiant in his fight for his education and passionate. And I, as an individual school committee member, learned a lot by uh, talking with Mr. Kincaid and with his son Willie. And um, I do hope that Willie speaks to us at the next meeting and I hope we can get his address. I'd love to send him a congratulatory card for graduating from high school. I actually did plan upon attending the Burke graduation this year, if it was held specifically because of Mr. Kincaid, Willie. And so um, I hope the committee can recognize his progress and thank him for his input over the years to us as a committee because I think we all learn from his presentations.
Well, thank you for pointing that out, uh, Ms. O'Neil, and I appreciate that uh, recognition of a special student that we have had, um, as, as you point out, speak to us on a number of occasions. I do want to note, um, I'll ask Mr. Street uh, over at Burke, uh, there was a online virtual uh, graduation. And um, I'm actually interested because I, I recorded a little piece for it. Uh, but I didn't get to attend because of that conflict. It's been recorded and I believe there's a clip that we can share with the committee. Um, and uh, and join in, in Willie's uh, celebration from afar. Any other full, uh, excuse me, new business from the committee? Okay, well, I just want to mention one other thing. I will be um, circulating uh, some, some dates with the committee uh, through Ms. Sullivan uh, over the next couple of weeks. Uh, unfortunately, we typically uh, have the month of August off, but we have just so much business to do with uh, returning to school. And uh, number the um, uh, high profile policy items that are gonna be on the docket for July that we need to have a meeting in August, um, and perhaps uh, multiple meetings. Uh, so I will be um, soliciting some of your availability. Uh, the good thing in quarantine is we're not going anywhere, so uh, we should have plenty of time on our hands, right? Um, but nevertheless, um, you should be on the lookout for that. So as I mentioned earlier, uh, the next school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, July 22nd at 5:00 PM here, once again on Zoom. Um, I want to wish a happy uh, end of the school year to uh, all the students and teachers and school leaders out there. Uh, my kids don't know what to do with themselves. Uh, we got a rabbit today, uh, so they'd have something to entertain themselves with for the summer. So I hope uh, you folks uh, will be able to find some uh, some joy and comfort um, in this time. There's nothing further. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Uh, thank you, Ms. Robinson. Looks like a second from the vice chair. Uh, if there's no objection or, or discussion uh, to this motion, Ms. Sullivan will please call the roll and we'll, we'll vote ourselves out of here.
Dr. Coleman? Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. Rivera?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Tran?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. LoCanto? Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night.
Have a good July.
Happy July 4th, everybody.
Yeah.
And take care.